Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller calling to order the Thursday, May 29th, 2025 City Council Legislative Work Session. And to begin tonight, we will have our invocation delivered by Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley, Poseville Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance delivered by Councilman Sam Davis.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us, Lord, and the rain that you have brought that replenishes our earth. I thank you for that. Lord, I just ask that you bless our city council, our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Lord, that you give them the guidance and the wisdom to make decisions that is best for our city, Lord. I ask that you bless the city of Douglasville, Lord, as we become a place where people want to live, they want to play, they want to work, Lord, a place where it's just a wonderful place that we can be and we can share and grow together, Lord. I thank you for those that have come, and I ask that you keep them safe as they leave here after the meeting, Lord. And I just ask that you continue to just do the work that you do for us. And, Lord, I thank you for everything you do for us, but most of all, I thank you for your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Davis, for the pledge, and thank you, Dr. Artley, for the invocation. Before we begin tonight, we have some protocol items to go over, and I'll go through that right now, so please pay attention. Don't make me repeat myself. This is the work session for the Douglasville Legislative Work Session for May 29th. Is work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on items discussed tonight on Monday, which is, what is that, June? Monday is June 1st, I think, second. The business you're here is not listed on the agenda item. There will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from Citizens Delegates Section to discuss your business. A few protocol items you need to be made aware of before we start, and please listen closely. We ask that if you do come and speak, we ask that you keep your comments and presentation on a professional level, dealing with facts that are important to this governing body to make their decision. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in a request that you leave the chamber and the premises for the evening. Only one person to be talking at a time. Do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience. Cheer. Carry on a conversation with others in the audience or disrupt the order of the meeting in any way. We're reminded that we are only required to accept public comment during acquired public hearings. We are not required to accept public comment on other items before the council. We do accept them, however, in order to make better decisions. If you have a cell or electronic device of any type, please power it off now or put it in silent mode. That is greatly appreciated. The agenda for this evening, we handle as follows. We have a committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and that will, any person representing the agenda item or the applicant will make his or her presentation first, and that will be the only opportunity for you to present information. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council will possibly ask questions of the applicant to seek additional information. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum time limit of 20 minutes for those who speak in favor or in opposition to the agenda item. The applicant's presentation is included within this time allotment. Each speaker individually is limited to five minutes, and please make sure, before you come up, to fill out one of the speaker's sign-in cards that are, I guess should be on the table outside the room. We have some additional ones here if you're stuck. Prior to, let's see. When you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, whether you are in favor or against the agenda item. Each person has one opportunity to comment on each agenda item, no reappearance. If you think of something later you forgot to say, sorry, no comebacks. It's not a question-and-answer format. It's not a debate format. You're simply going to provide information in regards to your position. Please address your comments to the chair, not to members of the audience, or to the applicant, or to city staff. If the information you're giving is repetitive or presented earlier in the evening, there's no need to present this information for a second time. Our policy requires the printed information used for review to be submitted in advance to the city clerk sitting to my right, your left, and that will be distributed to each of the members of the city council. Please do not pass out or distribute information in the council chamber. That includes during the comment period. All right. We will move on to our agenda this evening, and that is, which is handled by committee, and our first committee is the Economic Development Committee, and I will defer that to our, our vice chair is not here, so I will defer that to our ranking member, that is Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no new business under Economic Development Committee this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hudson. Our next committee is the Finance Committee, and that is chaired by Councilman Chris Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We've got one item tonight under Finance. Authorize the mayor to sign the Standard Design-Bill Agreement and General Conditions between owner and design builder and the Amendment Number One to Standard Design-Bill Agreement and General Conditions between owner and design builder with Albion General Contractors, Inc. For the Conference Center renovation project in the amount not to exceed $2,839,172 to be funded by the Conference Center's property and site improvements budget line and its reserves. Steve Morrow will, well, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Samantha Rosato, 6700 Church Street. We will have Steve Morrow up. He is with CPS, and he is the approved consultant on the project, and so I will go ahead and pass over our presentation to Steve.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, it's great to see everybody again. We're going to go through a quick presentation.
Stephen's address, I'm naming an address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Steve Morrow, 2005 Goldenrod Road, Roswell, Georgia. Sorry, always forgot that. But we're going to go through the quick presentation as an update from the last time we spoke, which was about a month ago, and since that time, we've been able to finalize all of the competitive pricing that has come in, done the evaluation, and come up with the final budget for us to be able to move forward with the renovation. So just some quick dates and a summary of sort of where we were and what we've done. So we went through the process, did the qualification process, selected Albion as the most qualified contractor that solicited on this, and we are ready to go for the next step, which is to sign the Design-Bill Amendment to establish the guaranteed maximum price for them to continue to move forward. So a little bit of an eye chart, but really what this says, and what's most important, is we're really on schedule based on where we were and what we thought was going to be. We're ready, if, as long as everything is approved tonight, we're ready to get started. Contractors sort of standing by, waiting for this approval, and they'll get mobilized and get ready. The timetable, obviously, associated with the closing of the Conference Center is critical because we're taking it offline for us to be able to do this, so we want to make sure that we stay on schedule to get the work done while the Conference Center is closed. Just a couple of shots. Some of the renderings that are up here really give you a look and feel for what the future of the Conference Center is going to look and feel like. A lot of work went into this with the design team, the interior designers, and the staff to really try to find what the new look of the space was going to be. There was a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of visits that included many of you to local conference centers, whether it was here or in Atlanta, to be able to get ideas, to make sure that we found what is current, what is being used in other conference centers like ours, to be able to make sure that we were using the right colors and patterns and look and feel of the space. One of the things I want to point out, left side of the picture, you kind of see the front desk is kind of out in space now. It's kind of in the lobby, and really, that was one of the major design elements that we wanted to make sure that was done. The design team really felt like the way that the current front desk is, the way that it's tucked into that cubby, doesn't really invite people to want to come in and ask a question or be invited into the space. So the redesign of that front desk and how it sits out in the lobby is a really important element to the new layout of the space. The meeting rooms, again, just a fresh look, right? Just being able to make sure that it's a space that's inviting and will enhance the Conference Center ability to be able to rent the spaces to folks for them to be able to use it. Ballroom, same, right? You can see, I think, if you were to walk in there today and then take a look at this photo, the sort of light and brightness and airiness of the space is really a dramatic change from where we are today, and this is what we're looking forward to accomplish. So just a summary of the costs. I know the last time we met, some of this was still in flux as we were getting to what that direct construction cost was and trying to get those finalized, and that now, again, they went out to the market, got competitive pricing in for all the elements of the work. They came in, and we were able to put together what we're calling the guaranteed maximum price for the design work that was completed, and this is the overall budget that we're asking to have approved this evening. And pending approval, the contracts will be signed, which will allow the contractor to get mobilized based on the schedule we have in place and be able to finish while the Conference Center is down and not being used. So that is the final recommendation for us, is to be able to ask that we get both the GMP Amendment with the budget approved with your vote when you take it. Any questions for us?
Questions from Mayor Pro Tem. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, notice you're using the contract documents consensus. Why, I'm not even familiar with that particular set of documents. Why are you using that instead of the AIA standard?
So just another form of the documentation. They are pretty similar, so this one is done, so AIA is done by the architect community. The consensus doc is one that's been developed by the contractor community. They're very much the same, but I will say that all of the documents have been reviewed by legal, and they've gone through that process to make sure that there's no language in there that is unfair or un, well, let's just say unfair towards the city. We made sure to modify everything as needed to make sure that it was right.
Okay, yeah, I notice they seem to be structured similarly.
They are.
So, okay.
It's someone else being able to sell a set of construction documents or contract documents.
Taking business away from the AIA, how dare you? The only thing, I just comment so people understand, you know, we've had questions, why are we renovating the Conference Center? You know, we've had it for 10, 12 years, and just so people understand that in the Conference Center business, you've got to renovate every 10, 10 to 12 years is about on average, maybe sometimes, some is often six to eight years, but you've got to maintain an up-to-date look for the facility because it is a very competitive industry, and they get a lot of wear and tear. You know, think about how many thousands of people use that facility every week, and so, you know, you're going, it's going to be forced to be renovated in a rapid period.
And I think, Mayor Pro Tem, that was confirmed with our visits to several of the facilities. Every one of the managers that managed the facilities that we visited confirmed that need. If you're not current, and if you're not up to date, the likelihood of continuing to maintain your business declined, so it's something that we learned as we went through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Thank you, Chair. Steve, thank you for your presentation. Everything looks great. I know I'm super excited, already missing being in there as of our first meeting. Just to clarify, you are also redoing the restroom facilities as well as the kitchen facilities?
Not the kitchen, but the restrooms. The kitchen itself is not being redone. The kitchen facilities, the equipment in there, I think, I think it's safe to say that the equipment in the kitchen in there is very functional the way that it is, but the restroom facilities for sure are being redone.
Okay, thank you.
And that evaluation was done as part of the process, right, as we went through and looked at it. The kitchen really, it wasn't a focus area based on where the public spends its time and interacts with the facility, and it's functional as it is right now.
Awesome, thank you. I yield, Chair.
Yes, Councilman Davis.
So the front desk itself will be, the desk itself will be built in, but there will be other furniture that does go in the lobby that, if needed, can be moved, but the desk itself will be a permanent fixture because it'll be built into the facility? Other, yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Rosato, do you have anything to add?
The only thing that I was going to add for Councilwoman Hudson was that the kitchen and essence not being included, but that's something that Jennifer and I are currently looking at, going back through the study with the previous consultants and everything. We did receive a venue assessment, a facility assessment that indeed said all of the equipment was currently good, but we want to make sure that we're staying on trends and on target with everything for wear and tear and budgeting purposes.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, would this be an item that we can place on the consent agenda for Monday?
Yes, sir. Is that your pleasure? It's in your budget, and it is funded through your hotel motel tax and that Conference Center fund.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Thank you all for your presentation, and we will place this on the consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tem, that's all we had tonight under Finance.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Our next committee is Housing Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Howard Estes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Our next committee is Legislative Intergovernmental Committee, and I'll defer that temporary chairmanship to a ranking member, Mr. Estes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We do have one item tonight, item 25-191, Adopt an Ordinance to amend the provisions of Chapter 58 of the Douglasville Code of Ordinances, Section 58-14, to add possess as a type of unlawful activity pertaining to drug-related objects, and Section 58-15 to add a section prohibiting interference with officers. And Ms. Jordan will walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Miranda Jordan, Staff Attorney, City of Douglasville, 6695 Church Street. The legal department has been requested to make updates to the City of Douglasville Code of Ordinances to effect the following changes, to add possession of a drug-related object as an unlawful act under city law, and to prohibit, under city law, the interference with an official, including employees and agents and members of our city council, when they are engaged in the lawful performance of their official duties. And this would include our police officers, our code compliance officers, who are often dealing with confrontational situations. Interference would include obstruction or hindering officials, making threats or using abusive language toward officials, and giving false information to officials. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this item? Ms. Hudson.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, we already went over this item in committees, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and there have been no changes since that was presented on May 19th.
That was an exact question, and it's only been a couple of weeks, but, thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hudson. Anybody else? Okay. See no further questions or comments. I would like to add this to the consent agenda for Monday evening. Looks good. And that is all we have for the Legislative Intergovernmental Committee, Mayor Pro Tem, and I might as well jump onto nine with personnel of an organization committee to say that we have no business in that committee this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. You're doing my job. Give me nothing left to do. Our next committee is Planning and Development, and that is chaired by Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let's buckle up. We do have a couple of items this evening.
Half the alphabet.
So our first three items here are all of the same applicant, so I'm going to go ahead and read them all off together, and then we'll hold one public hearing in the end and allow time, adequate time, for all three of those items. And that first item is item 25-213. Says, "Tabled from May 19th, 2025, to hold a public hearing and consider request for variance from Section 4.08 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the canopy accessory structure to be placed in the front yard and encroach in the front yard and, I'm sorry, and encroach in the front yard setback at 11 feet on a landlot of 1.30 acres at 9465 Highway 5 and Land Lot 160, District 2, Section 5, Parcel ID 0001, Application by 1618 Land Holdings LLC." The next item is item 25-214. Says, "Tabled from May 19th, to hold a public hearing and consider request for variance from Section 4.08 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the proposed building to encroach 11.5 feet in the front yard setback on a landlot of 1.30 acres at 9465 Highway 5 and Land Lot 160, District 2, Section 5, Parcel ID 0001, Application by 1618 Land Holdings LLC." Item C is item 25-215. "Tabled from May 19th, 2025, to hold a public hearing and consider request for variance from Section 8.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the required parking spaces from 56 parking spaces to 33 parking spaces on a landlot of 1.30 acres located at 9465 Highway 5 and Land Lot 160, District 2, Section 5, Parcel ID 0001, Application by 1618 Land Holdings LLC." And our very own Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this with us.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. So this is a proposal for a convenience store with gas pumps. They're requesting three variances. This is located at the corner of Douglas Boulevard and Highway 5. It was once a Walgreens, and now it's pop called Pop Shelf. They want to be able to take over that building and create a new style elevation for, and I didn't mention, the four retail spaces that go along with the convenience store and gas pumps, but they'll be creating a new elevation for that space. So as stated, the first variance is to allow the canopy in the front yard and allow the canopy to encroach 11 foot into the 50-foot front yard setback along Douglas Boulevard.
Thank you for that, and I believe we went over this a couple of weeks ago, but we have spoken with police and fire to ensure that those canopy structures would not cause any issues.
Correct.
And then my other question a couple of weeks ago is about the parking, and I guess like how many parking spots that would allow per business and what that formula might look like.
So again, their request is to reduce 55 spaces to 33. So I researched the amount of time a customer would spend inside the convenience store and other services. So it's about an average of three to four minutes in a convenience store, so if you're parking in front, you'll just be there for about three to four minutes to get your snacks, your drink. Most convenience stores don't have any place to sit down, so you would buy your food, but you would take that to go. It is the intent of the applicant to target certain types of businesses for the retail spaces, one being a tutoring facility, a cleaners, perhaps beauty. So for a tutoring facility, it would, a person would be there about 45 minutes to an hour. A cleaners can be anywhere from one to four minutes for drop-off and pickup. A nail salon can go anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours. A barber shop could be about 60 minutes, but can be as little as 25 minutes. Also, we have in our code calculation based on the size of the retail space. On average, it's one space per 300 or 400 square foot, so that would give an average of the retail spaces required, based on use, required between four and six spaces based on that use. The convenience store is required to have 20 to 22 spaces.
Okay, so 33, we said 33 minus 22. So if there's 33 spaces and you subtract the 22 for the convenience store, that leaves you with 11. So about, so it's 2.75, but you know, like two to three spots for the remaining businesses.
Correct.
Okay. Before I call the applicant up, council, did you guys have any questions? Mr. Gray? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Chair. Two-part question, which is, the underground gas tanks, I'm assuming from the drawing, look like they're going to be located over the setback line as well. Do we not require any kind of special permitting for something like that, if you're going to locate those beyond?
Well, I would definitely have to look into that. I did, let me take a look at the site plan. Sorry about that.
I didn't mean to throw you a curveball.
That's a good one. Okay. I'd definitely have to look into that further.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to give them a surprise, you know, they finally get out there, construction, and we realize that that didn't get permitted.
Absolutely.
So it'd be best to figure that out now.
Yeah, we're definitely focusing on the canopy.
Can we get that information before Monday?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is that Councilman Davis? I think I see a hand on there.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure Mr. Joel, remember many years ago, up from the Walgreen, there used to be a gas station right there with tanks in the ground. So I wondered, did he ever get them removed?
I'm sorry, you said there was a gas station there that had tanks? Oh, okay.
Yes, right behind the, it was on the corner before it get to I-20, and I knew the family that had it, but I forgot, but I wondered, did they get them removed before they put, they put it, I think that's where the cricket was. Yeah.
Right in there. That was a gas station there?
Yeah, that was a gas station there, so I'm hoping they get the tanks removed.
Okay, I'll look into that. I'll look, ask our building inspector. He probably knows about that.
Joe, you remember the family that had there?
Don't remember the family's name. The station was left a number of years ago.
Yeah, a long time. It wasn't the Morris.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? No, okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Would the applicant like to come up and provide any new information for us? If you'll just please give us your name and address for the record?
I was a lot taller in high school. Terry Boomer, LJA Engineering, 130 East Main Street, Canton, Georgia. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Madam Chair, I appreciate the opportunity. The only thing new I have to share, and I think that maybe Dana had something to share as well, during our last meeting, Madam Chair, you asked to table it so that you could go out and visit some, maybe not a like use, but another use that had minimized parking. And so I wondered if that was visited and if anything came back positive or negative to this case. The other item that I'd like to bring up is code for parking for convenience stores across the board. I provided Dana with five to 10 examples today of surrounding codes of counties and jurisdictions that had, into their ordinance, a parking code. The parking code for Cobb County is five. Doesn't matter if the building's 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet. If it's a convenience store, it's five. If you go to Clayton County, the most egregious in the state, it's 10 per thousand. So it would be double what is required in the city of Douglasville. Douglas County still has an antiquated code talking about bays, service bays. Well, we don't have any service bays traditionally in a convenience. Well, we don't have any service bays traditionally in a convenience store, so I wouldn't even know how to apply that math. We still contend that we feel, based on a real working model that we just built, that we will have enough parking for the service orient, service oriented retail that we're going to provide as well as the convenience store, considering that some code allows parking to be counted at the pump islands where the city of Douglasville does not have that written into their code. That's all I have to add, and I do appreciate the opportunity to come back a third time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beamer. Council, did you guys have any questions of the applicant? Coach?
Sometimes where there's a lot of stores, and I'm thinking of the one across from Target going down Chapel Hill Road, where there's some designated parking for some of the stores, like, you know, you're parking here to come in here, don't park here if you're not coming in here. I don't know if that's practical or feasible in this situation, but it sounds like twenty-two, was it twenty-two spaces? Sounds like a lot for a convenience store, so it sounds like it's going to meet the needs of what, we just go to Quick Trip, right there in the corner, Chapel Hill Road, and half those spaces are empty most of the time, so, anyway, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Coach. Was there anyone else? No? Well, at this time, we need to have that public hearing, so if there's anyone here who would like to speak for or against this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record. And again, we combine all three, the variance as well as the park and space variance and the canopy structure variance into this one public hearing. But if we don't have, I see some people looking around, but if, if there's no one here who would like to speak for this item, then I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing, and we will take this item up on Monday. Thank you so much, Mr. Beamer. Our next item is item twenty-five dash two one six, says to hold a public hearing and consider requests for a special land use permit for a personal care home for property zoned R three, single-family residential detached district for one point seven acres at eight three five four Chicago Avenue and landlot one ninety-three, district two, section five, parcel ID B zero one seven, application by TC Personal Care Home and Carib Joan Tougher, and Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us also.
Good evening again. Again, this is a request for a special land use permit for a personal care home located at eighty-three fifty-four Chicago Avenue. The home will be serving two to six elderly residents. The applicant has provided service in other locations for nearly ten years and is looking to expand their services, and I do believe the applicant is here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Would the applicant like to come down? Thank you so much. If you'll, please give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joan Two Four, and I am the owner and resident at eight three five four Chicago Avenue, Douglasville, Georgia. So I am here representing TC Personal Care Home, this is my mom, we run the business together. So we started our personal care home business in twenty seventeen as a family of nurses, including myself, after firsthand seeing how great the need for quality elderly care is, not just across the country, but right here in our own community. In speaking with hospitals in Douglasville and Atlanta, we've heard again and again how social workers are having a hard time finding a place for patients to stay in safe and affordable homes. Our goal is to keep people in the community, close to their families, and out of large nursing care homes, which can be costly and overwhelming. With today's staff shortages, those facilities can sometimes fall short and lead to issues like bed sores and unmet needs, that is, and that is where we come in. So this is everybody on the team. We currently have a personal care home on Lake Monroe right along Pope Road that we have been running for over seven years now, right in Douglasville, and we're passionate about creating a serene, home-like setting, and we believe in the power of personalized attention, dignity at every life stage, and good nutrition. So our caregivers and managers consistently ensure that the residents receive timely and attentive care, fostering an environment where our clients' well-being and comfort are always prioritized. We truly believe in cultivating family, an extension of our own family. Just look at our cuties, all smiling and everything, and it's not just them, their families are very pleased with us. If you take a look at some of the testimonials we have here, one of our residents went asks, why does she love it? She just says, I just love it, and sometimes it is just that simple. One of our caretaker families says, it's a clean environment, and Elizabeth, who is one of our caretakers, takes very good care of my mother, I am so grateful. So just for some context about what a personal care home is, according to the Georgia rules and regulations, it is a home and facility that through its ownership and management provides and arranges for provisions of housing, food services, and one or more personal services for two or more adults who are not related to the owner or administrated by blood or marriage. So it wouldn't be our own family, but it will be serving whoever's in that community who is not related to us. And in our home, we create personal care plans for everyone, which can include activities of daily living like bathing, dressing, mobility. We provide three balanced meals and snacks every day with specialized diets included, and we include medication management, of course, health monitoring, and so much more. So since we have provided great quality care over these years, we feel we are finally ready to expand to a new location, which brings us to the Chicago Avenue property. So if you look here, this is our survey that we submitted. It is a twenty-six hundred square feet home, five bedrooms, four bathrooms, it's been thoroughly renovated in twenty twenty-one, everything has been updated from the roof, the windows, age back, and everything, and it is not within a thousand feet of other personal care homes. So if you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you so much for that. So, and forgive me if you've already answered this question, but approximately how many people do you plan to have living in this home?
We're hoping to be approved for a maximum of six people.
Okay, and I'm assuming that you would just have to grow your staff?
Sorry?
Will your staff grow to go to that Chicago Avenue? Because the staff that you have on here, is that everyone that it takes to run the facility that you currently have off Pope Road?
Yeah, so we will expand our staff to be able to accommodate this new location.
And like, I know you mentioned elderly people, do you also serve special needs adults?
Yes, that is something that we are able to do, and currently we do have one person who is in our current home that is special needs.
And do people stay with you guys for a very long time?
Yeah, those are longest, like four years.
Right, five.
Five, yeah. So we've really kind of created that family with our residents now, so that's what we want to expand to.
Thank you for that. Council, do you guys have questions of applicant? I see a hand on there, Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you're having six people, do you have staff living in the house with the other residents, or do you just have people on duty around the clock?
So for the evening, we will have a staff who are living on residence, but during the day, we have somebody who, a caregiver who will come in.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, that's located right there in the ward. Is there, are anyone occupying the resident now?
Is it occupied by a resident now? No, since we are not approved for that, we do not have any, any clients in there.
Okay, so it's, I have to go by and take a look again, so how many cars would be able to be parked in that property?
So we do have enough space to offer parking per person. So if we are approved for six people, then we do have enough space on the property to give each person one parking spot.
And the resident would be able to take care of itself?
No, so we would come in to give them the care that they need. Ideally, in this sort of situation, the resident just has to be ambulatory and be able to leave the resident within three minutes if there is an emergent situation, so that would be the criteria for us admitting somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Davis. Coach?
Did I hear you say that the, the house is already ready to go as far as your needs, or y'all going to have to do some work on it to be able to accomplish what y'all are trying to do?
Yeah, so when we had our first ever pre-application meeting, they let us know that we have to make sure that our vent, our stove vent is heading directly outside, which is a change we've made. We've also included the fire extinguishers that are required, and if this passes before we officially go into operation, the state will also come and do an inspection to ensure that we are fully set up, so we will go by those guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm so sorry, Mayor Pro Tem.
The renovation that was done, has it made the house handicap accessible?
No, the house is currently not handicap accessible, but those are changes that we can make and plan to make.
Okay, you are a public accommodation, you will have to be handicap accessible, so make sure you.
Oh, gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Okay, if there are no other questions, at this time, we need to open the floor for a public hearing. So if there's anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this item, if you'll please come down, give us your name and address for the record. I don't see anyone moving, so I'm going to close this public hearing. Ladies, thank you so much. We will take this item up on Monday.
Thank you as well.
Our next item is item twenty-five dash two one seven, says to hold a public hearing and consider requests for a change in zoning from residential agricultural county to R two, single-family residential detached city. No, I'm so sorry, I misread that. From, let me just start all over. Hold a public hearing and consider requests for a change in zoning from RA residential agricultural county and R two, single-family residential detached district city to PUD Plan Unit Development District City for twenty-one point two four acres located on Malone Road and landlot six four six, district eighteen, section two, parcel IDs zero 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 one, zero 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 two, zero 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 three, and landlot six forty-seven, district eighteen, section two, parcel IDs zero 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 one, zero 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 two, and landlot seven zero three, district one, section three, parcel ID zero 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 six. Application by Malfris Group, I believe that is, and Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening again. Again, this is a request to rezone a parcel from the county, which is zone RA, and city parcel R two to PUD Plan Unit Development for a parcel located on Malone Road. The applicant is proposing a hundred and eighty-one units, a hundred and sixty-three of those are townhomes and eighteen are triplex homes. The applicant is also requesting an annexation, but what we're speaking about today, this, for this particular item, is the request for the rezoning. In total, there are six parcels, and this PUD, if approved, is located, there is, I'm sorry, there's a PUD that's located north of the site, which has a character area of medium-density residential, and it is the intent to put this site into medium residential if approved. And that concludes.
Thank you for that. And is the applicant here?
Yes.
Thank you so much. If you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record?
Just in case you need to find me later. Good evening, everyone. I'm Daryl Ray with HRC Engineers, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects, address is six five five four Church Street. So this project, we've been working on this project since back in twenty-two, and you guys probably, you know, if you were on the council back in the February of twenty-four, it came through with our request to go through the annexation. So been doing a lot of work to get part of this annexed out of the county and into the city, and a lot of our pre-conversations with city staff and county staff was trying to figure out which way was the best for this property to go, because as we get into the annexation part, you'll see there's, I think, maybe six parcels that are in the county and two that are in the city. So, but the county part almost becomes an island inside. We've got county, city property to the north of us, to the east of us, and to the south of us there, that just makes it, I think, a cleaner way to do this is to get it all into the city there. So as, as you guys know, we'll be talking about annexation next, but when you come in, you know, from annexation, you have to come in with a zoning. So part of this process is to ask for the rezoning as well as being annexed in to the city here. So like I say, this, this project's been started, we did the, I guess, first of middle February of twenty-four, went through the, the summer of twenty-four, had the, the county objected to the annexation, but then I think Miranda probably can help us understand some of the, the things going forward with that. But, but to continue moving this forward, we've got a point now that we're, I think it's time to bring it in front of the city council to discuss and to have a vote on this, to see if we're going to accept it. As Dana said, this is a project that's got a hundred and eighty-one total units, it's a hundred and sixty-three townhome units that'll be set up to be sold as single-family homes in there, and it's got, the eighteen units that are in there are a triplex that again be sold as single-family homes there. I know some of the concerns of, we, it might be with traffic, we've basically, we have turned in a traffic study, we do anticipate to create a left turn lane into our entryway there and a deceleration lane on Malone Road on there. Also, the fire code requires us to have a second entrance here, so basically, we have a, an emergency exit that is going to be used in, in the back of the site here, you might can see it where it ties into the cul-de-sac there, I think it's of Holburn, and that'd be gated and only used for emergency vehicles or emergency situations on there. So, you know, with that, you know, I want to make sure that we answer any questions with, with you guys. I, I will put out that the Malfris Group is a, made up of a fourth-generation company, the Mason that's here, Mason Malfris that's here with me today, is, his great-grandfather actually started this business, so they've been in business for a while and have done a lot of nice projects. They, you know, they're, they're, they're construction guys, and they like this type of projects and have felt like that this is something that they would like to bring to the community of Douglasville.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, and so it's, you said six parcels being combined as one?
That is correct.
So in order for it to move forward, it would have to either be part of it annexed into the city, or the portion of the city would have to be annexed into the county, is that correct?
I think that's our, our choices.
Okay. Well, no, I'm saying in order to, to build it, is that not what would have to happen?
I don't.
There was communication with Ellison Duncan at the county about doing a county slash city joint effort, however, we could potentially be looking at creating an unincorporated island.
Okay.
So there's, the, the better choice is to, well, there are multiple choices.
Right, but I'm saying, we would have to either annex the county portion into the city or vice versa in order to provide proper services for the, the development as well, it seems like.
It would be, it would be tricky after the structures are already on site, yes.
Right, okay, okay, understood. And were there, I felt like I had seen renderings in here at some point, am I mistaken?
Right, you're saying, right, for. Right, you're saying, right, for the the townhomes, they should be in there. There should also be an exhibit in there for, that shows you the different parcels that are county versus city. Where you kind of see that that island of county that moves up in there.
And what type of amenities are you guys proposing?
So I know what we've got on here, we're planning, we've got a show in a dog park, a clubhouse, a swimming pool, and open space as well along with that, so.
So then there would be a HOA. Would there be rental restrictions?
I don't know about the rental restrictions, but there will be an HOA required to go along with this.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, did you guys have any questions of Mr. Ray? You do?
Thank you. The traffic study that you mentioned, I know you guys have been working on this project for a quick minute now. How recent is that study?
So I think it was, it was updated right before we went through the annexation. So the one I have dated here is July third of twenty-four. And it matches this site plan that we have on the board. Does that make sense?
It does. Yes, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Would the applicant like to add anything to this? Or they don't have to, which is what I was offering. No?
Yeah, I would say I'll, if you don't have any more questions at this point, we'll move on. And if you've got more questions, feel free to ask and try to answer those for you.
Coach, did you have a question?
Well, just looking at that, all of, all of those lots around it, those are unbuilt lots, if I'm looking at this grid. There's no, or are those houses that surround it?
So are you talking on the color-rendered area or the surrounding property?
Surrounding.
So the surrounding property...
Those are homes.
Yes, so to, I'll say to the north, to the east, and to the southeast there, you know, those are, those are existing homes.
Okay, so you'll, you only have really one way out other than that cul-de-sac for emergencies? Because you're landlocked, basically.
That's correct, but we do touch two right-of-ways.
Gotcha. All right, that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. If there are no other questions of counsel, let's open up this public hearing. So if we have anyone that would like, and I know we do, that would like to speak either for or against this item, if you'll please give us your name and address for the record. And if you need a sheet, then I believe the clerks have those as well.
Is this, that's Dana Spoder, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Counsel, Chief, Council City, and all, and all others. My name is Dr. John Rogers. I live at sixty-three-thirty Holburn Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh-one-three-four. Actually, if you look at the map, you'll see the cul-de-sac, that's Holburn Lane. And I live about right in the middle of it, in the north side. We've asked for a lot of things. This is where all our wildlife comes through. And there's, it soaks up a ton of water during the storms. We love that, being just like it is. In nineteen ninety-six, I moved to that property and moved into a cul-de-sac because I wanted to know there was only gonna be a certain amount of traffic that I would deal with. As we look at, our school systems are flooded right now. They're overwhelmed. Adding more to the school system, adding more to the emergency management with our one fire department on the north side. Wasting our infrastructure there, working every week to pump the sewage out because we have a sewage issue on that side of town. The traffic in itself and what we're dealing with, we do not want this project at all on the north side. We don't want it for Hunter's Ridge. We don't want it for the north side. We have asked for immediate care. We have asked for a grocery store. We have asked for a few other restaurants on the north side. And all we get is storage facilities. And I'm not a negative individual, but these are not the most finest townhouses that are gonna be built here pertaining to the grade that's being built. I did my homework. This facility, if it's built, it'd cause a lot of us that are in that area to move, to leave our home. I don't want to move my home. I love my home. I love my neighborhood. It's quiet. It's convenient. And it's getting better. I mean, just look at what you did here with Jesse Davis Park. Thank you. Thank you. You guys, you did an awesome job here, and we love what you've done. And we want to enjoy it. We want our kids to enjoy it. But we do not want another ridge, or we do not want another reserve on the north side. The open spaces and amenities on here, I didn't hear anybody speak about this buffer in between properties. I haven't heard of anybody speak on the fencing around this particular development. I plead with you, counsel, today. Take us into consideration. We've been here a long time. We really do not want this. We want, we want to see the deer run through that area. We want to see all of our wildlife continue to be what it is there. That's why it's called Hunter's Ridge. And we have plenty of deer and fox, all type of wildlife coming through there. And we like what we have. Again, what we've asked for, we haven't gotten. But don't continue just to beat us down and allow these people to come in and build for their profit and for their gain. I thank you for your time. Please, take us into consideration in not allowing this to take place.
Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Ursula Dowdy, and I am a resident of seventy-three fifty-six Hillview Court in Douglasville, Georgia. I've been a businesswoman in the community since twenty-fourteen. And like many of my constituents, I care deeply about the place I call home. That's why I'm here today to express my concerns regarding the proposed rezoning of the R-A County and R-two, single-family detached district on Malone Road. As a homeowner and a member of this community, I've been, I've seen significant growth over the years. We've already felt the impact of increased traffic, especially along Dallas Highway, which is already heavily congested. Many of us, I'm sorry. Okay, many of us struggle to navigate the road during peak times, peak hours, whether it's trying to get to work in a, in the morning or return home at the end of a long day. Traffic is an issue that already causes unnecessary delays. The development of a new apartment complex along Dallas Highway has all, has only added to the pressure on our roads. And it feels as if there is no end or of sight. This is why the proposed rezoning to allow a pub district on Malone Road is such a concern. I feel this change will change traffic problems, will cause traffic problems, I'm sorry, that are already at their limit. The addition of more businesses, particularly those that will attract heavy foot traffic, such as public district, will only increase congestion. It's not just a matter of inconvenience, it's about safety and quality of life for the people who have already made their homes in this area. I would like to point out that many of us, including myself, rely on the peace and quiet of our residential area for a reason. After a full day of work or business, the last thing any of us want is to be stuck in more traffic. Currently, our delay commutes are already stressful enough. Adding more businesses or development to Malone Road is more, will make it even harder to get where we need to go in a timely manner. We've already had those moments when it feels like you're sitting in traffic for what seems like forever. And at the end of the day, all of us just want to go home in a peace and quickly, peaceful and quickly manner. This is stressful. If this proposed public district goes forward, I fear we'll see an increase in traffic and that makes it nearly impossible to travel through our own neighborhoods without speeding excessive time on the road. That's, that's time we could be spending with our families, focus on work, or simply enjoying our homes, things that will be harder to do if traffic continues to get worse. Another point I wanted to raise is that the agency proposed this change will not be, will not bear the same burdens, I'm sorry, burdens that we, the residents, will face. The people making these decisions likely do not experience the delay, strain, or traffic that will, that we will have to deal with. They don't know what it's like to be stuck behind a long line of cars just trying to get home, nor will they have the, have to navigate through the crowded roads that we already struggle with. As a homeowner, we have invested in this community. We, we've made this this decision with expectation of living in a certain environment. We bought our homes because we wanted to live in a peaceful residential area for business owners like myself. I chose to establish my business here because I believe in the potential of the community and the quality of life that this area, how, that this area offers. However, with the proposed changes, it feels as if our concerns are being overlooked in favor of development that doesn't seem to take our daily realities into account. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you oppose this development.
Thank you.
Don't make me have to reread the protocol. I don't want to pun, I don't want to punish you like that.
Thank you. If you'll please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, I'm Rebecca Tripp. I currently reside at Dorset Hills Road. I used to live with my parents here on Holburn Lane. First of all, thank y'all for hearing us out on this, and I hope you guys do consider this option. I'm against this building, a hundred-and-ten percent. My first point would be impervious area. I worked with WSA for the past seven years, and I've become very known to impervious area and the impact of erosion. We would be downhill, and anyone across the street from them is gonna be downhill. Wherever the water wants to run, it will run and it will erode. This will result in homeowners having to pay the expense of leveling out their land. Our fence is sinking faster than, faster than ever. We can't afford that. We pay too many taxes. Taxes have gone up already. What, what is the taxes gonna look like after this is built? As a resident who lives here, not just a builder who comes and goes, my concerns are prominent. The cul-de-sac access for emergencies, how will they ensure that it will stay locked at all times? Is it gonna be secured all the time? Is there gonna be security watching? What is that gonna look like? My other point, we have, the traffic impact study shows that this development will increase trips on this road projected of thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty new trips. This is a medium-density residential area. Development proposed is extreme-high density. Character of neighborhood does not match. We ask if this is moved forward for a fence to keep all sides of Hunter's Ridge private because the traffic lights of cars, noise, anything that this new development has to offer will be blocked. Why are we accommodating those who don't even live here yet and ignoring those who are already here? I thank you guys for hearing me out today. And I really hope you guys do take this in consideration to not build this. Douglas County and Douglasville is a big area. This can be moved elsewhere. Like John had stated before, we've asked for many things, immediate care. Like he said, this place, Jesse Davis Park, I've watched this grow. We wouldn't even come here a few years ago. Now everyone's flocking over here. We love it over here. We need more of this. We need more places to bring our community together, not split it apart. I feel as though my mom's house is right, right behind one of those open spaces. I fear for my mother's safety. I fear so much. I don't know what the crime rate, crime rate is looking like, but I hope it doesn't go up if this place is built. And I do thank you guys for hearing me out today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll please just give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tavoris Dennis. I'm a resident of seven-two-two-three Brittany Way, Douglasville, three-zero-one-three-four, right here in Hunter's Ridge subdivision. I've been a resident, a homeowner now for eighteen years in Hunter's Ridge. And I just want to appeal to you as a homeowner first. Over the last eighteen years, my, my kids have grown here. They matriculated through Stewart Middle School and also Douglas County High School. And over the years, our sense of community within Hunter's Ridge has degraded, I'm sorry, degraded so much to the point that all of my surrounding neighbors, our kids grew up together. They're the same age. They're just about out of the house now. But of my five surrounding neighbors, three of them are now moving because of the development in the community, right? So I want to appeal to you as a homeowner and speak to the impact that it would have on my community, the sense of community and family that we're losing, and continue to struggle with that in Hunter's Ridge. And also, I love Douglas County and my community so much so, I decided to be, become an employee of Douglas County School System. Currently assistant principal, one of, one of five assistant principals at New Manchester High School. As I said before, my stu, my kids matriculated from Stewart to DC. So I understand what education looks like in Douglas County. Stewart, Douglas County are struggling. If we add to that stress to our school system, we're only gonna suffer more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Rouse. I also live in Hunter's Ridge subdivision. I oppose. So please forgive my nervousness. I'm not used to this. Where's my sheet go? One of the reasons why I wanted to oppose it is because of quality of life. I've been a homeowner in Hunter's Ridge for twenty-five years. I don't plan on selling my house. I don't want to sell my house. I love my house. I think putting, allowing this to go up will affect the resale value of my house. If I decide I wanted to, if I leave it to my son, he decides he wants to sell, he won't be able to sell. Not when, because I stay on Cardiff Lane. And Cardiff Lane is, the way the subdivision is made, I think Cardiff Lane and Hillview, they both, the circles kind of meet a little bit where John lives in Holburn. I'm the first house on Cardiff Lane. I'll be able to see this, I think. I can't see you putting that many homes and it not rise up, and I not see it. So I, I oppose that as well. If I could find my notes right quick. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're doing great.
Where did they go? I was so prepared. Okay. I was at the city planning meeting when this first came up and they, there were a couple of us that were there. And one of the questions that they could not answer at that time was, what would be the price of the homes? At that time, they could not say. I don't know if they can now. Asked were there affordable homes, low income homes. I don't know which is the proper way to say it. I think someone said something about workforce planning homes. I don't know what that is. And I don't think they could have answered that at that time as well. They asked, was there a traffic study done? At that time, I think they said, yes, it had been done. When was it done? Was it done prior to the huge development that's been built right across ninety-two? From Malone? If it was done before then, that's null and void. Everybody cuts through Malone. And I understand you got to do the best way you can to get home. You find the easiest way. Adding a hundred and sixty-three homes, eighteen triplexes, they're going to come back through the industrial park to Huey to Malone to get home. It's a very narrow street. You have homes that are actually on Malone. You have homes that their driveways drop completely off. And a lot of them kind of park up near the top just so they can get out. So would you, would they lose land going into what they want to build, or would they have to take this people's property? And how would that happen? From there on back, you have homes as well, about four or five more homes on that side. And you have about three that will be on the left side. So again, when was the traffic study done? Could the school, I think someone mentioned this, but can the school handle that? I think it's Stewart Middle, not Stewart. I can't thi- Stewart Middle. Can it handle two hundred plus more kids? And I gotta say, really probably three hundred plus more kids. I think at that time, at the planning, planning meeting, they had asked if anyone had consulted the school. I think at that time, they said they didn't have to. I'm not really sure, so I don't want to kind of repeat what was held at that meeting. But that school can't handle that. They already, they already have trailers for the kids. You know, it's, it's time to get our kids out of trailers. So either, so just no. I, I don't see how the school can handle that much more. Once before, it would ask, did anybody talk with or communicate to any of the community, any of the communities that this would affect. Actually, there's more than just Hunter's Ridge. I love my subdivision, but then there's Wellington Court, there's Willow Bend. That it would affect greatly. As far as I know, no one has talked to anybody in our subdivision about what they want to do or how it's going to impact us. John talked about his property, so I can cross that off. And the young lady talked about taxes. What is that going to do as far as taxes is concerned? And basically, I think that's all that I have to say at this point, other than just to reiterate as the young ladies before me had stated. Please take this someplace else. Ninety-two is wide open. I go to work down toward ninety-two. You have a lot of homes down there for sale, a lot of homes with a lot of property for sale. Investigate, they try that. I know they've been trying to do this for a long time and, and this may be the reason why.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Your time is up. I'm sorry to interrupt. No, you're good. You did wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, please don't.
That's, that's a total time. I'm at the chair.
Okay. We have an additional twenty minutes with the next item as well, though, correct?
Actually, it's not a public hearing, so it is, is at your discretion. Are you the last speaker?
Can I do a quick show of hands? How many more people were here that wanted to speak on this item? Two, three, four? Oh, wow. No, we don't have a public hearing on Monday. I would like to allow a few more minutes, just-
Fifteen more minutes?
Okay.
We'll, we'll put fifteen more minutes on the clock, so for those who want to speak, my recommendation is to prioritize who would like to go first. And we'll set the timer to ring at three minutes per speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, I shouldn't take too long. My name is Melissa Vega, and I live on sixty-two ninety Wellington Court. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my neighbor. She couldn't be here. And I don't like public speaking, but I think this is so important. So I'm just going to quickly read an email with the thoughts that we have. As a voting resident of Wellington Court, we want to express our strong opposition to the proposing rezoning. The development raises serious concerns to our neighbors and I. Increased, like they mentioned, vehicular and foot traffic will significantly impact our daily lives. And we are concerned about the potential rise in crime as well as we have already, as we've already observed changes in neighborhood activity following the opening of the reserves. Additionally, the project threatens to reduce property value, as we heard as well, and future strains for our already overburdened school system. And I think we would like to understand the specific measures of the city or county plans to take imminent, or I'm sorry, I'm like trying to hurry up. But, or just see what steps are going to be taken to address public management or traffic, I'm sorry, traffic management and ensure public safety and how the tax levels or how taxes are going to be shown or changed after this. And we just want to say that. You know, I, I haven't heard anyone from Wellington Court, but we're right there as well. When I heard of it, I mean, I, I work an hour away, but that's still, you know, home and that's just a CODISAC. It's not a, a big neighborhood like Hunter's Ridge, but we don't want it either. So just wanted to come out and speak for myself and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alfred Jenkins. I live at seven two eight seven Essex Drive, and I try to keep it under three minutes. My wife and I moved here in twenty-twelve. We bought a house in Hunter's Ridge. And after I retired from the military, we raised our kids there. Three of them graduated. Well, one is still attending University of West Georgia. Two graduated from University of West Georgia, and one graduated from Savannah College of Art and Design as an animation and game design specialist. So we want to continue to stay here. And there are some things I would like to bring to your attention if you're not aware. This is not the first time we've heard of this. The first meeting we came to about this, these apartment homes, homes, townhouses, and whatever they're calling them, the first time it was withdrawn because so many people in the community came out against it. So they withdrew it. The second time, at the zoning meeting, the zoning committee did not recommend it. Okay, so we're asking that you not override them, but hear us out as well. We don't want this in our backyard. This proposed plan is in the backyard of Hunter's Ridge Drive, in the backyard of Holburn, in the backyard of Wellington, as it was mentioned, in the backyard of Hillview, and all the residents, all the homeowners, all the residents there. And we had no idea until we saw the signs. We're asking, letting you know that question, why haven't there been impact ser, why don't you have impact surveys before you from the police department, from the fire department, from Public Works, from the utilities, from the school system? Why don't you have that? Isn't that something that should be provided as well from the community? Just remember that. Also, we enjoy the green space, and we want to keep our green space. We enjoy the rabbits. We enjoy the deer. We enjoy the hummingbirds. We enjoy the, the nature. We enjoy the quietness. But if you put a hundred and eighty-one apartments or townhouses, or whatever they're calling them, in our backyards, we're going to lose all that. And we don't want to lose it, okay? We like what we have. And we want to see it get better, not worse. Okay, we already have single-family homes. We already have townhouses. We already have apartments in our community, and new ones that were just built across the street. We're, we're doing our part, okay? We, we're, we're helping to have affordable homes. But it shouldn't be heaped upon our backs solely, okay? We, we don't, we don't want that, okay? We even have trailer parks. Three minutes? We even have trailer parks. So, thank you. That's, that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Frank Nguyen, eighty-nine twenty-five Orchard Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. I just want you to know that I don't live in this community where, where this is going up, but I don't have to to see something that's bad. That you're bringing in, or they're proposing to bring in a set of townhomes that are total, totally dense in comparison to the R-two that I believe is already there. And it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to say that is a complete change of this neighborhood. And all these people have a right to say something about it. And I want you to know that just li, I'm proud of Douglasville. I've lived, I've been a part of it since before I was born. My family's been here for a long time, and that is not appropriate for Douglasville or Douglas County in the residential area. The, the thing that is bothering me the most is I don't hear one single proposal that where anybody has gone to Trent North or the school system and followed up and said, what is this going to do to our school system if we keep putting these kind of developments? If we just keep on and on, this does not fit. At some point, you have to ask yourself, when is enough enough? And ask yourself, do you want this next door to your neighborhood? And if you don't, then vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Hey, guys, I, I know that you guys are all in support of your fellow residents, but if we can hold the claps down for right now until the end, please, because it's taking away from the last remaining minutes that we have. So let's let everyone get a chance to speak that we possibly can.
Hello, my name is Raina Jenkins. I also live on seven two eight seven Essex Drive. My dad actually came up and spoke just a moment ago. I also have my own concerns with this project. One of them being, one of course, the green space. A lot, there's been a lot of construction happening in our neighborhood and just near our, where we live. And it's been causing some problems because wildlife have been getting, having trouble finding places to go. And it's caused more traffic and issues there. But also another concern is that adding a new neighborhood to our neighborhood is very concerning to me because while they say it's just for emergencies, in practice, that's not actually how that tends to go. And if it's faster to get out of the neighborhood by cutting through hours, a lot of people will cut through our neighborhood on the regular. And it's also concerning because we already have some like road safety issues in the neighborhood with speeding and the lack of sidewalks and just some already pre-existing concerns that I feel like it's going to get a lot worse if we don't do anything about it. Even just some of the housing that was added recently near our neighborhood still cut down a lot of trees and what used to be greenery just seen from the back of the houses. Now you can see like the actual housing complex through there. You can hear people screaming and kids making noise from back there. And a lot of the wildlife has gotten a lot more condensed. So now we're even seeing like coyotes in the neighborhood, walking around in people's yards. So I feel like another complex with even more people like this would be even more concerning and cause more problems for us as residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was that everyone? One more, okay. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ken Doohart, eleven twenty-five Augusta Woods Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. So as many of these homeowners have stated, their communities are affected. We're on Malone Drive as well. As you go down Malone, we're next to Hunter Ridge. So we get the traffic from the trucks that go through our neighborhoods and destroy the roads. And if you check the, the books on the city, you will see how many times they have to repair their roads because of the transportation issues that we have already. Also, our property value, that's, you wouldn't want this in your neighborhood. Our property value, I've been there for twenty-plus years in Augusta Woods. Our property value has taken the hit back in two thousand and eight, just like everyone else. But it has grown tremendously in the last couple of years. But if we continue to add these type of homes, apartments, as well as government housing in our area, it's going to affect our property value. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. If that was everyone, and I believe it was. Okay, yep. Then, guys, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the, of the public hearing. I, I would like to just address a couple of things if we can while everyone is still here. And I just kind of wrote down a couple of y'all's questions on here. And I'm going to start with the security access. I'm pretty certain that it's some kind of code that is required, but I feel like, Chief, can I call on you? Do you know how that works with the, in subdivisions where they have like emergency only access points for fire and police? How do those work?
They should already have gone through an impact study in the fire department. I know our department has some information to yield concerning that, but they should have some type of regulations on that.
Okay, because if I'm not mistaken, you guys, my husband is a firefighter here in Douglas County. And he's told me before that they have certain access codes that they can use to get through those gates. They're not just left open, but that's something that we can work on between now and Monday, getting a, a more specific answer for you guys on that one as well. And someone mentioned eminent domain, and that is nothing that we've heard anything of, and that is not something that's coming up in this. This is strictly properties that people are selling. It is an assemblage of people who are selling their properties. Public services. So again, Chief, can you guys handle a subdivision like this coming online?
I would say, yes, we can, but I would say with the growth coming in, it will task us some more. Because right now, it's, it's a wooded lot, and when you can put all those people in there, yes. We just going to have to realjust our manpower to make sure that the people over there in that area are safe. And we will, you know, we will do that, and you all have. Are you going to let, y'all going to let me talk? She asked me the question, all right? And I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm being straightforward with you. It would task us. But I'm not going to say we're not going to be up for the task.
Thank you so much for that, Chief. Thank you very much for that. Has the, has the school department weighed in on this?
Yes, ma'am, and Mr. Gray is going to make a recommend, an announcement.
So we're going to provide that information for you for schools and fire on, on Monday.
Okay, perfect. So then we'll wait till Monday on those answers. I'm going to come back to that when I call him up here. Development meetings, just for the record, sometimes there are development meetings within the communities, but it's not something that has to happen. It's up to that- It's up to that developer if they choose to do that. So if they don't choose to do it, this is a perfect time for us to come together and talk about it. If I'm being, I, I think that many of you guys, I see another Realtor right in front of me. I think that we kind of understand what, what property rights are like. And so we know that if it's not this development, at the end of the day, that, that very well is going to be something going there. Right now, the city portion of this is Zone R-two, but the future land use map says medium density. So in our future land use map for that city portion of the land, it is medium density, which is what is being proposed here. So, um, I'm gonna ask you guys, if you really don't like this development, think on, if there's something that we can do to work together for this development. Because a lot of the things that I'm hearing from the community oftentimes is grocery store, doctor's offices, um, pharmacies, all these sorts of things. And the thing, what we need most to get those sorts of businesses is rooftops. That is what it's going to take to get those types of businesses in here. So if there's some sort of amenities that we can do or other things that we can look at it, then I want to hear those ideas as well. Um, so just think on that for me. And then, um, I don't know if we have anyone here, because I don't believe that public service is here, but I was curious about the truck traffic that was mentioned on Malone.
Um, I believe that the applicant mentioned early in the presentation that they're in the midst of a traffic study, and that information will be, um, presented. Dana, are you aware of that, or Mr. Ray? I felt like you did mention that.
So we, we submitted one with the annexation.
Okay.
In, uh, July of twenty-four.
All right, so that will be a part of the next item for the traffic study.
Okay, perfect. And then, Ms. Ray, if I can ask you one more question, and that was the price points on these homes, what was that?
So, yes, um, we've talked about that, and, excuse me, um, they've told me around three hundred and up.
Okay. So that's not workforce housing. I, I was hearing that a little bit.
So, um... Then, I, I don't wanna argue anything. What is the definition of workforce housing? You know, so maybe we, maybe there's no real debate on that. But, yes, I said that at the planning and zoning commi- because, you know, basically, it's been my understanding that the city, city staff has, wants places for people to be able to live, be able to move back to Douglasville, or not have to leave Douglasville to be able to find a place to, to live and stay here. Go off to college, come back, have a place to buy, be able, have a place to, be able to afford to buy a house to stay in this area. Um, so that was the, uh, sentiment of that comment. So that in no way is government-funded housing a part of this. And I would not call workforce housing government supplemented housing.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate that clarification. All right. Guess what, guys? We have, we have another one. Uh, so let's go ahead and move on to that next item. And that is, item twenty-five dash two-three-five, says to consider a petition to annex thirteen-point-six-nine acres of the northeast intersection of Malone Road and Linecrest Drive and Land Lot six forty-six, District eighteen, Section two, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-two, and zero-zero-zero-three, and Land Lot seven-zero-three, District one, Section three, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-six. Application by Malphorus Group. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Okay, um, this is a request for an annexation of four parcels. Um, even though it's discussed that their options, their option is to bring the county parcels into the city. Um, so, and again, they will be rezoning RA County, R-two, to PUD for that annexation.
Thank you very much. And would the applicant like to come down and go over this item with us?
So Daryl Ray, HRC, sixty-five fifty-four Church Street. So same thing. I know there's another, um, slide that we should have that might help, uh, everybody understand the annexation portion. Oh, it's, oh, it's my job to do that? I'm sorry. So what do I do? All right, I need my glasses? Okay, there we go. Interesting. I could've done that a while ago, too, right? Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming y'all can see this right here. So this kinda shows you those properties that we're talking about there, then, and how the, uh, the property that shows the county, RA County, there's four different tracks there, um, out of this that, um, are in the county, and how it is surrounded, um, with the PUD from, uh, uh, the, uh, Hunter's Ridge, and then, um, the, uh, also the Wellington Court there. Um, it basically creates an island for the county there. So, you know, as all of the conversations we were having back in, um, twenty-three, twenty-four with the county and city staff, you know, we made the choice and, uh, made the decision to ask for annexation into the city, um, for this type of development here. And I think there's, you know, just the, a, a lot of reasons that, that make it good. And I know with that annexation also, when you submit that to the county, you know, and, and go through that, um, you know, there's, there's public comments, uh, available through, to the fire department and the police and the sheriff and all of those things. So they had those opportunities and the school system, um, to do that. So, like I say, hopefully, we can pull all that together and make sure everybody knows that that's, that has been done, and, uh, those, um, all of those have had a chance to look at this. So, um, we just felt like the environment was, was best to come to the city with this type of development as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Ray? Mayor Protem, you only get two minutes.
Yeah, actually, it wasn't specifically a question, Mr. Ray. Actually, I did wanna kind of emphasize something, you, a point you made a little while ago, which, um, made a lot of sense, and I think it's something that folks need to think about. Somebody mentioned that they wouldn't wish to see this development happen in one of our backyards. Well, that is happening in my backyard, and I represent Arbor Station. There's a development very similar to this going in, literally in our backyard. Now, we didn't, we had no say over it because it's entirely wholly within the county. So the city council could not, could not weigh in on it. Um, so I appreciate and understand that comment. There were also comments made about wanting to have grocery stores and, and entertainment venues and, and activity places for families and so forth. And, and as Councilwoman Miller mentioned, those don't come for free. I'm, I'm personally inclined to respect the sentiment of the community of the neighborhood. I, I get that. And I'm generally going to want to go along with what the community asks for. But understand what you're asking for. If you're, if you, if you wanna push away a development like this, that's fine. You have every right to do that. But you all, understand you're also pushing away the development that would come along with it, which would be the grocery stores and the pharmacies and the entertainment venues. They have, as, as Councilwoman Miller mentioned, they have to have a certain level of density to make their businesses work. And I'm fine with, I'm fine with the community not wanting this. That's totally understandable. But just understand, like I said, understand what you're getting, when you, what, what, what you want, and what you're getting along with that. That's, that's what you have to really realize. Is that, you know, a Whole Foods and a Trader Joe's is not gonna come into a community our size. They're just don't gonna do it. They're not gonna make money there. That's the truth, okay? Understand, some of us have development experience and know how these things work. So... The old expression is, "Be careful what you ask for. You just might get it." Okay? Councilwoman Miller, I'll give you back the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Um, and just to clarify, um, what's already been said, this is... Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. And this development is a, is a private development. We did not seek this development out. The, and, and just like any grocery stores or doctor's offices, we don't recruit those. The best thing that we can do for the community is to create an environment that is good for those types of businesses to come. Um, and, and a very big one of those, um, examples would be this park right here. And I love the way the entire community came together and said, "Yes, we want to help pay for this park. And we want to help improve this part of the community to help create that environment for more businesses to come." Um, it, but it, it is true what I said, and it's true what Mayor Protem said. As far as, in order to get those businesses that you guys want, it's going to take more rooftops. So if this is a development that you think you might could live with, maybe if there were some changes made, I would be curious to hear what those changes are. But keep in mind that, like, if this does not come here, this landowner has a right to the highest and best use of their property. They do, at the end of the day. So that means that if it's annexed or not, if it's, if the zoning is changed or not, something can go there. Unless you own it yourself, that, that property owner has a right to do something with their land. Um, and like I said earlier, the, the future land use map shows medium density. So I urge you guys to, to communicate with us. Feel free to email us over the weekend or come back. Well, we will not have a public hearing on Monday. But feel free to reach out. Let us know what your thoughts are. No, sir.
Could this decision will be made privately?
Monday. Yes.
That's why I'm saying Monday, so that means we don't get to speak.
So I'm asking you to please email me, and if you think of anything else that you'd like to add to it, please email us. MillerN@DouglasvilleGeorgia.gov.
It just amazes me what I see. You know, I've been a business owner and have, have a business for, for the last forty years.
Sir, we have, we will have a comments, we do have comments at the end of the meeting. So if you wanna say something, you can come up and say during that period.
What you're saying is businesses won't move or come out here if we don't let this apartment complex, I would call it, build, where it's gonna be built.
I'm not saying any, we're not saying anything specific, sir. We're, we're just saying, just describing the environment that's established. Now, sir, sir, please. Sir, sir, please. Sir, if you don't, if you don't stop now, we're gonna have to ask you to leave, please.
You know, I'm just saying it's just ridiculous.
Hey, sir, y'all, come on, come on now. He told you, you could speak at the end of the meeting. So let's wait, because I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
I, I, I'll leave.
Okay, well, come on, let's leave.
Okay. All right. Hey, guys, come on, let's, let's go ahead and wrap this up, and we will take this item up on Monday. It is MillerN@DouglasvilleGeorgia.gov.
DouglasvilleGA.
Douglasville, Georgia. G-A.
Uh, and all, all of our email addresses are on the web, city website. So you can, you can, you can comment or, or access all of us.
And I've got business cards on me. I can pass out at the end as well. Okay. Item twenty-five dash two-two-zero. Is this right? Oh, no, there was not a comment section on the annexation, just the rezoning. But there are public comments at the end of the meeting. Okay. Okay. Item twenty-five dash two-two-zero says, "Hold a public hearing and consider requests for a change in zoning from PSP Public Semi-Public to TCMU Town Center Mixed Use for seven-point-three-nine acres located at six-eight-four-zero Church Street and Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, parcel ID A-zero-one-four. Application by Norhaven Partners." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Uh, good evening again. Again, this is a request for a rezoning from PSP Public Semi-Public to TCMU Town Center Mixed Use for a development consisting of two apartment buildings, uh, totaling two-hundred-and-fifty-seven units. And they are also proposing two retail commercial buildings located on Club Drive. Uh, this site does have history. Uh, the city purchased this land with the intent of doing this particular, uh, mixed-use development, um, in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. We had two developers, um, come forward with interest. Um, unfortunately, due to COVID and the economy, um, they had to step away. So now we have our third developer proposing, uh, this development. Uh, along with that, if you choose to approve this, uh, staff recommends two conditions. Um, one will require Norhaven to acquire the property rights to the cemetery encroachment, um, before the land disturbance permit. And the development plan must be approved by the city engineer and the director of community, community development before the, uh, land disturbance permit. Um, they are also requesting, um, five variances. Do those have to be read off separately? I think they do, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray before we call the applicant up here? No? Okay, thank you. Um, would the applicant like to come up and go over this item with us, please?
Good evening, uh, Mayor Protem and council members. Uh, William Norris, uh, sixty-five-five-four, uh, Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight on our proposed Douglasville Town Green Project. We are proud to introduce a thoughtfully planned mixed-use development that reflects the vision for growth and vibrancy in downtown Douglasville. The Douglasville Town Green Project will consist of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, uh, multifamily residential units across two separate structures, complemented by approximately eight thousand square feet of retail space. Our vision for the retail component includes a building that will support a mix of food and beverage concepts and service-oriented retail that will serve both downtown and activate this part of downtown and serve the broader community. The multifamily community will be professionally managed by an onsite leasing and management team. We will deliver best-in-class amenities, indoor amenities that will include a fitness center with a yoga studio, a club room with coworking space, and a rooftop lounge that will offer panoramic views of the Douglasville Town Green and of downtown Douglasville, serving as an ideal setting for small resident gatherings or quiet relaxation. Outdoor amenities will feature a covered porch that opens to an event lawn with grilling stations and, uh, an area for residents to enjoy the resort-style swimming pool with the pavilion. Additional residential services will include packaged concierge, gig speed internet, and valet waste collection. We anticipate rents will range from fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month for our one-bedroom units, and eighteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars a month for our two-bedroom units, offering competitive rate for high-quality housing in the downtown area. We are especially excited to deliver one of the first professionally managed elevator-serviced residential communities in downtown Douglasville, raising the bar for both quality and service for the local housing market. Importantly, the two-hundred-and-fifty-seven unit density complies with the Town Center Mixed Use TCM zoning designation. And we believe the project aligns with the city's broader goals for revitalizing the downtown corridor and enhance the livability of the Town Green area. We are honored to be part of this transformative movement for downtown Douglasville and welcome any questions that, uh, council may have on our proposed variants or, or any other aspects of the development.
Thank you very much for that. Um... Council, did you guys have any questions of the applicant before we opened this up? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the commercial sec- I'll let you get back up. Uh, looking at the site plan, the commercial, uh, segment, is that, are, is that pretty much just set in stone at this point? Is there still some flexibility on the size and orientation of those buildings that you've got indicated?
We are committed to bringing eight thousand square feet, plus or minus, of retail for this area. Now, um, as we've been working with our consultants, helping us with the programming and the, the space planning, um, we, we, we may have some variations in that component. But, um, we do, you know, our goal is to basically create some areas for outdoor seating, engagement with the park across the street. the park across the street, and create spaces that are basically going to be functional for today's restaurateurs and operators. We're looking at some smaller spaces within these larger spaces, call it a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred square feet, that would be ideal for like an ice cream stand or a coffee stand. Our retail advisor has worked on numerous projects in East Atlanta Village and some areas of Kirkwood and some other areas in Atlanta. And really what we're trying to build is kind of a, a hub to create some opportunities for some smaller operators to come in and operate a business and renting a space that may be a slightly higher per square foot rental rate, but fits in kind of that eight-hundred to fifteen hundred dollar a month lease rate, if that makes sense, where a small business operator can afford the rent. Does that answer your question, sir? I went off a little.
Close to it. It sounds like there's still some flexibility in other words. You don't, you haven't.
No, so it was eight thousand in our agreement.
That's right.
Correct, yeah. But you wouldn't be opposed if, if the opportunity came along to add some, add more if it was?
Sure, yeah.
I assumed as such, okay. Last thing, your background was in architecture, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
I'm just trying to understand why the pitched roofs on, on the buildings.
So, and, and happy to provide some renderings of what the views will, will be like, happy to submit those via email, and, and the city can make those available for public comment. The pitched roof i- is not going to be noticeable when you're standing at ground level. So again, these are four-story, in some conditions, they're five-story because of the basement condition. It is a low roof in order to meet with the building code, so there are height limitations when you get into this type of construction. You, you will not see this element, but happy to provide examples. Lee House in Raleigh was a deal that I developed back in two thousand and fifteen that has a similar kind of aesthetic to this project, and would be happy to provide some photos of that that would kind of help you better understand. But it, as, as an elevation, you're seeing it kind of in a, in a way that you won't see it from ground view. I don't know.
Except you're at the low point there, that you will see it from the studio.
Did we have any of the?
But you're fine. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you. Council, were there any other questions? Okay. All right. Oh, were you?
Yeah, there's our sideline.
Were you looking for that photo? Is that what?
I was going to flip through and see if we had the, the red or the one that the mayor showed in her state of the city address.
Okay.
I don't know that we have it.
Yeah, it's not in there.
Yeah, we can flip through and see, and if so, we can share. If not, then we can try and find it for Monday if that's helpful.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Guys, at this time, let's open that public hearing. If we have anyone here who would like to speak on this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, Amy McCoy.
Just. If you'll give us your address.
Yes, nine-nine-three-eight Ashton Old in the beautiful Tributary. Yay. So one of the things that I heard a lot of the residents complain on is, you know, wildlife, things of that sort. And granted, this is going to be within the city of Douglasville, so it's already quite dense as it is. But how are we preserving additional green space for water runoff, things of that sort? Is there opportunity for there to have been stacked parking, like decking, so that way you have more ADA accessibilities for multiple levels, things of that sort? Just from a conceptual plan, just as a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the parking is coming up in one of these other items on here. Was there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. I'm Howard Lynn. I live at six-seven-three-five Oakhurst Court, Douglasville, which is down the street from the development that's being proposed. I'd like to start out by saying, of course, you know, we're, we were opposed to the apartments the last couple of times it's been tried. And I know it's a high-development, high valuable piece of property, and I know the city owns it. And we were hope, hopefully, that something different than apartments would be going there. We thought maybe a mixed use, mainly more like the concept that Carrollton has now just proposed. It was in the paper this week, downtown area. They're doing a really nice project. Matter of fact, I think Ray Lynn is doing, Ray Lynn and Lynn Co. is doing that one. But to me, we were, I was looking at the town, the, the town center code that we are talking about changing for, and zoning, and what some of the requirements are. And I was wondering how we came up with, the gentleman came up with two-hundred-and-fifty-seven apartments. I understand in the code, you could only have thirty-five units, residential units per acre. Is that the code? I believe that's correct. And if you take thirty, thirty-five units and you times seven-point-three-nine acres, you have two-hundred-and-fifty-eight apartments. So I reckon we saved one. So, so, but anyway, I believe that's, if I'm reading it right, indeed. I would like to ask a question about that also. When you're basing the number, the thirty-five number on there, is that for the total project? Or do you have to take out the commercial part? That, I think there's two commercial buildings projected here. Does the calculation, is it calculated over the whole amount, or is it calculated over the amount where the residential part's going to be and not the residential and the commercial part? That's a question I would have. I don't know what, if there's, have an answer for that or not. But that would, if you took the commercial out, you would reduce the apartments. Right now, you've maxed out. And the other thing I would like to ask on this, if, I was concerned when the last, at the zoning notice or the, on the, on your website, that I think earlier it commented about the apartments, and this time it did not count, comment on the apartments, it just basically said rezoning from, from one zoning to the other. If someone, in case this development does not go through, if it's approved and it doesn't go through, can someone come in once you have approved this new zoning? Can they come in? You've already, you've already made the approval. What if somebody comes in and wants to do something totally different? Or does it, do they have, does the developer have to present what they're going to do before you can go forward? Because once you open it up and you have the zoning there, what's the next person going to do unless there's something specific? And I think I saw it in, in your guidelines. But I wanted to make sure that was a case, that you just could not say something fell through because it's fallen through twice already, now it's the third time. So if this one falls through and you've, and you've already rezoned the property, what happens to the next go-around? Are we going to be starting over again or what?
I would like to address your question. So the TCMU zoning classification is unique in that it requires a development plan as a condition of the zoning. So to answer your question, if someone, if this project were to fall through and another developer came in, they would either have to follow the exact plans that have already been approved, or they would have to initiate a rezoning.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yes, sir.
That's what I read. Also, I want to make sure to put that on record, that that's what's required. The, oh, let's see. Of course, obviously, I said earlier, we would prefer it be selling besides apartments. But again, you're maxing out, you know, the apartments. If you could increase the commercial side and reduce the residential side. Because I think the guidelines, I believe, is a maximum of fifty percent on residential, right? Is that right? Or is that, or is it seventy percent? There's, there's a twenty percent minimum on commercial, I think.
That, that's correct. The twenty percent commercial minimum and the residential maximum is eighty percent.
Eighty percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So, but anyway, speaking to the value of the, the rental part, I know Villarico has some new apartments, and I think they, their two-bedroom start at nineteen hundred. So, you know, it's.
I'm afraid that was your time. But if you're okay to stick around till the end, we'll make sure that you get your questions answered.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, if I would make a suggestion, as the individuals come up to speak, if you all have questions, if you allow just the presentation to go before the council, and then we can address those questions afterwards.
Okay.
Because as the Mayor Protem mentioned, it's not necessarily a question-and-answer period, but to make things smoother so we don't get into a situation where we're going back and forth and everyone has an opportunity.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for that. Was there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? There's already somebody up, so you can go next.
Frank Wynn, same address. And one of the same points, as far as the school system is concerned, I'm disappointed to find out that we're not going to have the information from the school until the last minute before the vote. But I think this is about double the last development that was up here as far as what kind of stress it may put on the school. But it also addresses another problem. It looks like it's a, a very nice proposal that they have, but there's a lot of things about the downtown area that it's, it, it still overloads it. First of all, as I've mentioned before, the roads are not compatible for this kind of traffic. I looked at the traffic study that's on here. The same, it looks like the same people that proposed the previous development are the ones that did the traffic data study on here. And looking at it, I'm not an architect, but there's two numbers that just don't make sense on here. One of them says the development will generate twenty-two-hundred-eighty-two weekday trips. And then when you add up the daily trip rate down in the bottom trip table two, trip generation, it comes to twenty-six-hundred-forty-seven. That's a lot of, both numbers are still a lot, but they're not consistent. So I don't know what this study actually, it says it's using some kind of data format, but I see two different computations on here. What I don't see is any comparison to what's already there. What is the traffic that is on Par Drive? What is the traffic that's on Church Street right now? And how does this increase it? What, what is the comparison? You have a school just a few blocks away, the, one of the biggest schools in the county, Douglas County High School is there. You had, of course, you have a cemetery which doesn't generate near the traffic, but it does generate a lot of traffic at individual times. So I think that the biggest problem with this development is the size of it. It, it goes overboard for what you're wanting to try to do next to the, the town center, especially as far as the collateral costs that are going to be there. You're going to have to repave. You're going to have to pay Chief Sparks. I know he's going to take care of business, but he's also going to tell you, I need this much more money to do it. And if you don't do it, then you're not taking care of business. The whole time I've been here, I keep hearing about tax base, helping my tax base, helping my tax base. And what happens is, you raise the taxes, a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars this year on the house. So I'm not getting the benefit of the, of the tax base on, on this because the services keep going up. So when you have two-hundred-and-fifty-seven units versus, let's just say, a hundred-and-sixty, cramming as many as you can, you're having more services. And we're talking about our water costs, our sanitation costs, our law enforcement costs. And when people are that close together, I think you have more of a problem with, with security, and it increases the cost with that. You have the fire department cost, and you're going to have a lot of road-related costs in this particular area. So the development as is, I think, is more than what is appropriate for the area. I put.
Thank you. All right, folks, was there anyone else who wanted to speak? Sir, you don't have to raise your hand, just come on up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Alan Cosby, nineteen ninety-two Rose Avenue. Well, one thing that has not been brought up is about the National Guard Armory. I'm retired US Army, twenty-something years, and General Fowler brought the armory to Douglasville, if anybody don't remember that. But they're getting squeezed out because for decades, they parked all their vehicles, their military vehicles, where, right where y'all want to put this stuff. And they don't even have enough parking now for when they have their weekend drills for the people coming. And if they have a real-world emergency and their vehicles aren't even there, then what? So y'all need to consider that.
Good evening, Dr. Kiper, Christopher Kiper, at sixty-seven oh-two Haynes Street. And Mayor Protem and Council, Madam Chair. I, I know this is one of those that you look and say, wow, this night's been kind of back and forth, and we say that nothing's ever perfect, but we're in support of this, this project. As we put, we intentionally, in fifteen years being in Douglasville, moved to downtown because of this. Now, I know there's a lot of situations that we can all solve as we're a part of a community that we respect everybody's opinion and come together. And so when I look at this, I, I provided some notes. I didn't realize this was the third time, so thrice be it. It's an opportunity for creating a, a creative mixed use. And in terms of the number of units, looking at that, a, a single-bedroom in, space typically is not going to have someone that's going to go to school. So if I look at all of the areas and where I've been urban-wise, this is a lot like what we see in other areas of, of Atlanta that's just exploded. And that's what we have to deal with as we look at our master plan and everybody that was a part of the community that came in and said, well, want to be a part of this master plan, what's happening? And so that, that adjustment, that change, it really helps promote the vision that we're going with, and we just need to be mindful of working with these developers. The only piece that I would look at with this one is some of the variances, and I don't know if we're going each one tonight, or is this just an opportunity to go through each, just kind of give my general comments?
We actually have a, we do have a public hearing for each of those.
Each one of them?
But you can go ahead and.
I'm just going to give you everything, but I mean, supportive of the, the, the opportunity with the variance because you have to do that ultimately for a project to go through. The sidewalk piece, I would say, let's just be cautious, let's be mindful, you, you've got a town green there where we want to have walkability. And I know there's a lot of other, other projects going on within the city to do the walkability. So we start to look at where people of, of certain, you know, types are not potentially going to drive around Douglasville when they can take a walk and go to all of the places that they want. So as long as we know that, hey, we're going to cut that down, and that gives you maximum use of that land. But then I would look at the facade waiver, and, and while I get the perspective of this that it's more residential, the idea, I think, was that, hey, you've got like commercial use down below, and then you've got residential up top, is that, my, my favorite quote is frankly right, I learned this as a new, new boss coming in, and a racer's better on the, using a racer on the drafting board than a jackhammer on the construction site. You'd respect that, Mayor Protem, is just being mindful. And I know the facade is, is nice, but I'd just be making sure that, is there something that if that was to pass as an ordinance, that we are very mindful of how that passes through with this entire development project? And lastly, looking at that, as we start to move through, some of the concerns around, you know, the, the number of, of buffers and other things within the sustainability and being mindful that I know our Parks Department, having recently gone through the citizens program and that, that we are always aware in the city of all of the, the potential, you know, heat deserts and things like that that go on. So just being mindful of how that property is going to be developed and for better use for the community. So overall, supportive of that. I think it'll draw in a lot of families that'll look to this, that even our individuals like our family and, and having a son that's out of town, wanting to move back, get married, he's not instantaneously going to have children, maybe it's an opportunity to be there for a few years and then look within the neighborhood and say, hey, I need to have a house that, that I can ultimately do. So I think it's just going to help raise things. And when folks, you know, are, are talking about property taxes, the more we bring in developments of this, it balances that out, and it may not then ultimately be the increases that we need to have. Because in the county, we only take a percentage of the city, and then we have a fund balance that's out there that continuously funds projects. So in support of that, as long as we're just aware and being mindful as you all are as councils, thank you.
My name is April Street.
My name is April Streetman, eighty-seven thirty-nine Club Drive. I realize that we are going to have development up at the top of our street. I do not agree with the amount of development that we're going to have. The apartments or the townhomes or the residential, that is not what was presented. In the, in the long term, we have upped the amount. You've just heard from the same person regarding less amount of homes on twenty-some-odd acres, and you're looking at seven acres here, and you want to up that amount on it. I do feel that I could come to terms, I mean, and I'm not, of course, anyone, but it's just the amount that y'all want to put in and that you want to do all of these variances on property that y'all own. And why would you not do those variants so you could sell to this developer?
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? We have two minutes left. Okay, if there's not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Don't worry, we've got more. Item twenty-five dash two-two-two. Hold a public hearing and consider request for a variance from section four point one zero point G of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the required interior street sidewalks from fifteen feet to five feet on a lot of seven-point-three-nine acres located at six-eight-four-zero Church Street in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, parcel ID A zero-one-four, application by North Haven Partners LLC. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
And I just want to quickly state that we're going to provide the information for the schools for, for Monday. There was a concern for that. Again, this is a variance request to reduce the interior fifteen-foot required sidewalk to five. So as it states in the code, it says, let me get to this right way. All interior streets that have sidewalks no less than fifteen foot. So it's basically inside the, if you will, courtyard that the buildings create. So we just, they want to reduce that from fifteen to five.
So it's not the actual, like, public sidewalks that people would use at the town green?
No.
But the, like, and just on the inside of the buildings as well, not on the street sides?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Council, did you guys have questions of Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the point of a fifteen-foot sidewalk on the interior of a development?
I, I don't know.
I mean, is that something we, is there a rationale behind that?
Because there's not, there's not a, any type of plaza or there's not any type of, let's say, open space. They do have amenities from one building and the rest is parking, so.
I mean, it just sounds like you're, at that point, you're making a courtyard.
By doing a fifteen-foot, that would be, yes.
Are you aware of any history behind that?
I'm not. You know, this is a new zoning classification that was just created. So I'm not quite certain it was done with your previous community development director. So I would have to, we would have to follow with the drafter of the ordinance to find out the, the reasoning behind it.
It might have been a typo.
We were, we have discussed this and it could potentially be a typo. In order to address that for this particular application, it was advised for them to file a variance.
Well, I understand that for you.
That may be something that comes to you all in the near future.
Clean that one up. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilwoman Henson?
Yeah, so just to pros, and I'm, I'm understanding this is very preliminary. So we're, we're figuring out as we go with this new classification, but there doesn't seem to be any, like, safety constraints or anything that would be involved with this sidewalk reduction, correct?
From reducing it to five foot?
I'm just asking to ask why not?
No.
We don't see any reason why that would be an issue from general welfare. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I felt like I had another question and it just led my mind. Oh my goodness. Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. With that being said, guys, this is a public hearing. So if we have anyone here who would like to speak on the sidewalk variance reduction, come on down, give us your name and address for the record.
Daryl Ray, HRC sixty-five fifty-four Church Street. So yeah, just kind of from our side of it, yes, as we were talking and working with staff and everything, as we came across this, it just didn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense on our development inside this area to have fifteen-foot wide sidewalks along roads. We don't really have roads in here. We've got parking lots and access to our buildings and stuff. So as we kind of gone, worked all the way through this, you know, we've, it's been questioned, hey, was this really a, supposed to be fifteen feet? Or was this really a typo maybe in what got produced and passed at the end? So as stated earlier, it was, it was recommended that we go ahead and ask for the variance here, you know, to get out ahead of this rather than having to fight through it through the LDP or development plan or any other part of trying to get the development moving forward.
Okay, so it just sounds to me like this is the new classification and we're just going to work through some kinks with it. Okay. Council, did y'all have any other questions on this note? Okay, if you'll, hold on for me just one second, because we're going to have a public hearing. So let's open that public hearing and if you'll come up to the podium for us and give us your name and address for the record.
Can I do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was confused on this sidewalk thing. You know, here I am again, but I'm a veteran, I'm also a disabled veteran. I can barely keep a straight line on a fifteen-foot sidewalk and you want to make it five foot? And I like to walk around Douglasville. Ain't going to work for me.
So, so most of these questions we'll, we'll address at the end. If you guys will just hang tight for me. We're going to write them down and we'll discuss them at the end.
Public comment, Christopher Kuiper, Dr. Kuiper from sixty-seven oh-two Haynes Street. In support, as I said before, this one, I actually did some research. Looks like the county has four feet, so this is a foot extra. And I believe it might be a typo in, in the piece there, because I didn't understand if it was fifteen outside and five in, that makes, that makes sense.
Right. Thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the sidewalk? If there's not, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Yes, Coach, you may.
Let me just clarify. The sidewalk, the fif, the fifteen down to five, gentlemen, that's within the apartment complex, correct? And also the apartment complex is gated, correct? So the, nobody's going to be walking around on those five-foot sidewalks unless they live within the apartment complex. Am I correct in that?
So it's vehicular gated.
Okay.
I do want to make.
Gotcha.
Decisions.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important for residents to be able to walk.
Okay.
We're doing the vehicle gate.
Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
We are doing the vehicle gate because the city has done such a good job with the Greystone Amphitheater programming. We have to balance providing parking for our residents during the eight to ten big events that happen at the amphitheater. So that, that's why we've chosen to, to gate this one vehicular gates.
But the, the reduction is within the compound.
Right.
Yes, sir, that's right. So.
It's in between those buildings.
I, I don't believe we're asking for a variance on the, is there a pointer on this one? There's there? The, basically the frontage that I'll call the, the Church Street frontage and the Club Drive frontage, those have the wider sidewalks.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's close that public hearing and move along, but this is the twenty-ninth. Stop it, we have so many more of these. Okay. Is this right? Okay. I'm sorry, my iPad was, or maybe it was user error. No, it keeps bouncing back to the one that we've just talked about. All right, we're going to read off paper and if Mr. Jenkins will come help me with this, please. Okay. Item twenty-five dash two-two-three. It says, hold a public hearing and consider request for a variance of section four point ten point, I think that's I point two, of the Unified Development Ordinance to waive the requirement that no two stories of the same building may have an identical facade on a lot of seven-point-three-nine acres located at six-eight-four-zero Church Street in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, parcel ID A zero-one-four, application by North Haven Partners LLC. Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Okay. Yes, this is a, a request to waive the two-story on the same building have an identical facade. And the interpretation that I can give you is that it could be that a developer comes along and is able to do just a solid brick building with no particular design and just windows. So I think this is a, a safety factor for developers that come in that will produce a good product as you see here. So.
So right now, does our ordinance state then that these buildings should match with the materials being used?
No, it says you, you cannot have the same material. So they have proposed different materials at different elevations, different colors.
Okay, I'm following you now.
Yeah, the other side of that, if it wasn't in place, then someone can come in and just do bricks and windows and that would be it.
Okay, understood. Council, do you have questions on this? Mayor Pro Tem, I know you do.
If you want to understand what he's saying, I would suggest you look at a picture of any mass-produced post-war housing in Great Britain from like the nineteen fifties and you'd, you'd understand where they literally built acres and acres of apartment or townhouses that are identical. And it's just mind-numbing. So I think that's what the intent is here, to not let that happen.
Yep.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Any more questions of Mr. Gray on this? Okay, well, friends, this is a public hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record.
William Norris, sixty-five fifty-four Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. I think it's helpful for me to just share the context that we submitted with the variance request. So we're basically asking for this waiver due to just the proportions that are created on a four-story building. So if you, if we follow the dictate in the zoning ordinance, you end up with kind of a layer cake structure. We, we are making the request respectfully because we feel like we can create a more balanced and aesthetically pleasing architectural composition on a four or five-story building by being able to have some vertical elements and not being constrained to the two-story facades being identical on, and also asking for the facades to not be identical on each side. I would note that in, in my eyes, this building needs to be a background building. The city's done a great job with creating the Greystone Amphitheater, repurposing the, the bridge that used to connect to the, the county jail over to the public safety complex. This building needs to really serve as a backdrop to Douglasville Town Green. And we, we respectfully are asking for this variance to be able to provide the elevations that we presented to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
April Streetman, eighty-seven thirty-nine Club Drive. I would just like to speak on what he spoke about regarding the facade and a four or five, a five-story building. Previously, it was brought up about the, the roof line, that this is not an, it, I don't know how to pronounce the word. It's not pleasing. It's not a pleasing roof line. If you were to bring that structure down, and that would lessen the amount of people that we have in those apartments, you would have a roof line that would be a beautiful backdrop to our amphitheater. But as it looks right, looks like right now, it looks like a jail to me. And we just got rid of the jail.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the facade? If not, we'll close this public hearing. Well, friends, there's more. Item twenty-five dash two-two-four says to hold a public hearing and consider request for a variance from section four point ten point J point three of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the substitution of surface parking development in lieu of the slip-deck if additional property is acquired on a lot of seven-point-three-nine acres located at six-eight-four-zero Church Street in Land Lot sixteen, District one, Section five, parcel ID A zero-one-four, application by North Haven Partners. Mr. Dana Gray.
All right, so this variance's request is to substitute the surface parking development plan in lieu of the slip-deck. So right now, the attached development plan shows a slip-deck parking. It is possible that they will acquire a, a portion of the AT&T lot, which would mix the split, split, split deck. And then they would have the surface parking, which would be at the back of the building. So they would join that parcel to the parcel that they have. They would still have to go through another development plan and get approved by the engineer and community development and our development team.
Thank you. Council, questions? No. And can you tell me, how big is that AT&T lot?
That is going, I think, I think they, they have enough to, I think it's fifty-foot by the length of the property line to the north.
Okay, so, and you said that they're looking to acquire just a portion of that?
Yes. Oh, that's not the, that's the portion that they're looking to acquire.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, at this time, it is a public hearing. So if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this item, please give us your name and address for the record.
Daryl Ray, HRC. I can talk back there easily, but get up here and this goes on. Excuse me. Daryl Ray, HRC sixty-five fifty-four Church Street. So yeah, this could be a little bit confusing, but I'll try to walk you through it and would say, please ask questions if you, if I get off and, and get you confused. So what we have been doing has been, oh, God.
Daryl, you want me to take him?
I think I got it, but. We've been working with AT&T. So AT&T building has been there forever. Just on this plan that you look at to the, to the right of the sheet there. They have about, from our property line to about, their building is plus or minus two-hundred feet. So we've been in negotiation with them to buy a hundred-and-fifty-foot-wide swath on this backside of what we call Building Two Thousand. That would allow us to wrap this side of the building with parking and not have this slip-deck. So everybody know what a slip-deck is? Thank you, thank you. So a slip-deck is kind of like a parking garage per se. It's a architectural fancy way of talking about a parking garage, but it doesn't really function like the one at the Convention Center there. It, it basically is just two levels, one above the other, where it doesn't really have the ramps that connect the two. You come in from different levels to, okay? So the plan you see here right now shows the slip-deck and how we were meeting our parking counts. Through our negotiations with the AT&T people, we have signed intent to, to purchase that. So we, we, I think they've agreed to terms on that and now just working towards a, a closing for that property. Why that's important to you guys and this process is that with that, we want, we'd like to, you know, hopefully, we're going to get everything Monday approved. We're moving straight to development plan to submit to, to you guys, to the staff and to the city council so that then we can move right into our land as disturbance permit drawings, okay? So what's going to happen is, once we get everybody's approval and get everybody on the same page, is when we add the AT&T property, our site plan here will change only to add the parking on the, on the south side of these buildings and to not have that slip-deck. to add the parking on the, on the south side of these buildings and to not have that slip-deck. And just a little bit of configuration change on the surface parking that's in the middle here. So what we're trying to do is to not have to come all the way back through this process and ask for all these variances again because of adding that 150-foot swath on the side over here. That changes no intent of what we're asking for and what we're doing today and Monday.
Thank you for the explanation.
Does that help?
It does, I think.
You think?
Yeah, okay. Like, I under, and you might could tell me, I understand the thought behind this slip-deck, but why would you not want to do the slip-deck, other than probably feasibility?
There's some, definitely some economic cost to that, right? So I think when some of the master planning was done on this property and for this, you know, I believe they thought they had additional property. So as we were going through that design development stage of that, it was realized that, hey, the property line is where we're showing it on this plan right here.
Okay.
Okay? And then, then we went to AT&amp;T, just, it was like, here's this property they're not using. They might not ever use it, you know? How can this come into play and maybe be feasible for us to add?
Understood. Thank you. Counsel, did y'all have any questions on this? If not, guys, if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this item, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Beverly Green, 8751 Club Drive. I've got a question. Where are the entrance and exits to the parking, the apartment parking? Where do they come in and out?
I'm not, give us a moment and we can get that portion of it pulled up then at the, at the end of this.
Come in off of Church Street onto Club, it's already difficult to make a right-hand turn right there. And then you've got the parents that are parked there letting their children out and they're loading their car seats on the street side. That pretty much you have to go on the wrong side of the road to get through the area. And then you get there at the stop sign and, you know, once again, it bottleneck's right there. So for them to enter and exit right in that area, to me, is a safety problem.
If, Jack, if you're referring to Airway Academy's traffic, that, Airway's no longer there.
No, I know Airway's no longer there, but it's still a, I won't use that word. It's a show.
Thank you for not using that word.
And you do have to be on the wrong side of the road to get through there most days. And I'm someone that's running, sorry, running to get groceries, this, that, and the other. So I tried to avoid it and use Selmon, but Selmon is not very easy to navigate either. But from a safety standpoint, does, I mean, it, well, even Church Street, it's narrow. And if you're not in your parking spot exactly as you're supposed to be, which apparently most people can't do that, you're, you're in the middle of that road as well.
A lot of people are challenged when it comes to parallel parking.
Well, those streets are narrow. You know, meet a fire truck coming up or down one, which I do regularly on Selmon. They're, they're all very narrow for what's going on up there. I don't think that's going to get better. But that was my question. Where are they going to be coming and going from?
Thank you. I'll get someone to try to pull that up for us here in just a moment so we can show you guys that portion of it. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? Sir, if you'll just come on up and give us your name and address for the record.
I got a little behind on the sidewalk thing. I'd like to say something else about that.
Understand, Alan calls begin 92 Rose Avenue. Understand, it's on the inside, they want to reduce it to five foot, but there's no consideration of disabled people because you've got people with wheelchairs that are living in there or visiting or vice versa, you know? And, you know, it's like a two-way street on a 15-foot sidewalk, but if it's five foot, you've got somebody coming down, bringing somebody with a wheelchair, and then there's another person coming the other way, what are they going to do? Pull off on the grass? Or what are they going to do? So I don't agree with the five foot.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the slip-deck and the parking lot? Okay, if not, let's close that portion of the public hearing. Madam City Manager, can you help me when we wrap up at the end to have somebody come up? And can we go back in the slides to show those? Okay, thank you. All right, you guys, item 25-225 says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 8.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance regarding tree locations in parking areas on a lot of 7.39 acres located at 6840 Church Street in Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID A014, application by Norhaven Partners LLC." Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
And I apologize for giving the wrong dimension. I was way off. So excuse me for that. So yes, this is a request to waive the 15, every 15 parking space where you have a tree island, and they're asking to waive that. So that is part of our code for parking lots. Probably in total, they probably would remove about eight to 10 of the trees.
Okay.
So that completes.
Do you know when we brought that ordinance online? Because I know, like, when I go to Target, they don't have trees in that parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you look at this zoning ordinance that was created, it was created from various combinations to create an opportunity for mixed-use development on smaller lots.
Okay.
So as Ms. Jordan mentioned, this is the first time we're doing this ordinance. So there'll probably be some tweaks that we have to make as you bring on more development downtown, as you've mentioned you wanted to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Counsel, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray while he's up here? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come and go over this one with us?
Try this again. Daryl Ray, HRC, 6554 Church Street. So basically here, you know, just throughout the interior where our parking is, you know, we're going to be pinched for space all the way through here. So as Dana mentioned, the ordinance says one for every 15. You know, we'd, we'd like to offer up a condition of one to every 30 and be able to meet that requirement there and also be able to meet our surface parking requirements that we'll need for the, for the project.
Okay. And Mr. Gray said it's about eight trees that we would be removing?
That's, that's probably, that's probably correct.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we'll still have, you know, a lot of other things going on that we'll touch on as we do a variance here, but we've got other buffers and other trees that are not, so we're just talking like interior to the parking lot.
Okay. And these types of trees, I mean, they're not like big oak trees or anything. They're probably like crape myrtles or...
Well, I think your ordinance says I can't use a crape myrtle. So there'll probably be bigger trees. The idea is to get a shade tree in the parking lot.
Okay.
You know, but it's, it's still in a very narrow island, per se, for a big tree to be in. But we have, there's certain trees we can use that do better than others in urban environments like this that we'll, we'll make sure that are used.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, questions of Mr. Ray while he's up here? Mayor Protim?
I was going to say, I think for future reference, if we're looking at this ordinance and making some amendments, I think, you know, maybe requiring a certain percentage of semi-permeable pavers would probably be more environmentally useful than, than the trees, frankly. So, but something to consider.
That would definitely be something to look at. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, guys, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on the tree variance, if you'll please come down and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. This has been a long night. Thank y'all very much for endurance, seriously. Being vegan, there's always a struggle finding good, healthy options. But I also think about our population that with housing insecurity, things of that sort. Just want to throw a recommendation. I love the permeable, as far as aesthetics, but maybe fruit-bearing trees. Something along those lines that allows options for the community to be engaged with, or even just some additional guarding spaces. Things along those lines, I think, could be adequate spacings that can involve urban designs and things of that sort. Just as a recommendation. Wasn't planning on speaking, but just thought it was a great opportunity to throw that in there.
Thank you for that. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the trees? If not, let's close this public hearing. Oh, sir, okay, come on. If you'll please just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Alfred Jenkins. That's my dad, also named Alfred Jenkins. At 7287 Essex Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. And I wasn't planning on speaking on the tree thing, but I, I don't really like the idea of cutting down more trees just because I know, like, it's a small amount of trees, but I know we already have cut down so many. And I do like the plans to, like, put other things, like, in place of them. I just think if we don't need to do it, I, I don't like the idea of just, like, you know, continuing to cut down more trees and whatnot. But I think if we do, we just need to make sure that we put other steps in place to make sure we're taking care of nature and, you know, even the community aspects that was just mentioned, I thought were good ideas as well. So that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins.
Just to be, just to be clear, no trees will be harmed in this development. This is, this is future trees that won't happen, not trees that are being cut down.
Yes, I agree.
But you're, under the current ordinance, you are preventing trees from being there. And, you know, I have a charity, we paid for 64 trees downtown around Douglas County High School. I don't see why we should waive any ordinance that requires trees in the community. It might stress them a little bit because they're, it's too condensed, but that's the gist of what they're saying. It lets them compact more in there. And if, if that's a problem, you know, so be it. The trees need to be there. I wish the ordinance required more trees, especially in a community where people are going to be living. Trees are, are good in a lot of different ways and, and I would, I would oppose the change of that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this item?
William Norris, 6554 Church Street, Douglasville. As a compromise that I'd like to offer out, hearing some feedback from the neighbors, we would be able to plant the trees that we're not planting on our site, you know, call it eight to nine trees, and we can have HRC figure out what would not have been planted on the site, where we can offer those either elsewhere on the property or pay into a city fund to be able to provide the trees. So I think that would be inappropriate. If, if the council would, would find that as a condition that they would add to the approval, we'd be more than happy to, to meet the neighbors in that respect. So just offering that as a suggestion for a condition to the approval of the variance.
Thank you so much for that suggestion, Mr. Norris. I really love that.
I'll be brief. Dr. Christopher Kuiper, 6702 Hayne Street. I was going to actually just say that, is there something that we can do from a sustainability that offsets it, but also maybe in addition to that, while we say trees, is there other greenery, as was just suggested, you know, edible greenery or something there that doesn't just make it a actual parking lot? It's a little bit more unique planters or something to that case. So, thank you.
Thank you. I love these suggestions. Hey.
You do have a planted buffer there between the cemetery and the parking, and that's something, again, that's at the developer's interest. If he wanted to develop a community garden for residents in the, in the complex, certainly something to consider as well. So that would add to the amenities.
Look at this, let me put our heads together. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm closing that public hearing, friends. Okay. That's not doing it again. It keeps bumping back up. Item 25-226 says, "Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 9.01 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow construction within city stream buffer setback on a lot of 7.39 acres located on 6840 Church Street in Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID A014, application by Norhaven Partners." And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this with us.
Okay, and this is the last variance request, which is to allow construction within that city stream buffer setback. And part of what they're offering is to provide the shrubbery and plants in that area, so wood, wood buffer from the cemetery and the parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Counsel, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gray on this? No? Okay. And would the applicant like to add anything to that?
Daryl Ray, HRC, 6554 Church Street. So what we're doing here is, everybody knows this is the old jail site. The jail site basically had already disturbed all of the buffers that we're asking to be able to reuse, okay? So if you go out to the site, you will see there's a fence that's out there that was the old jail fence around the outside perimeter of it, that's down in this area on the bottom side of this plan here. So we, we show that. So we're just asking to be able to, 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 to use that previously disturbed area, you know, in our plans as we move forward here. And as you see, this plan also shows some planting back of some of the buffer areas that they, that they might have disturbed, but we're not going to use. So that's our game plan, is to add plant material back into this, into this buffer area. You know, as you know, you've got a 25-foot state buffer, then the city buffer's another 25 of no disturb, and then it's 70, another 25 to make it 75 of no impervious. So at no point do we get inside the state buffer here. So it's just the city buffers that we're asking for this variance on in, in an area that they've been disturbed for, for many years. And you can see, you know, we've got a stream that, I'm not sure, it might even start under the amphitheater. It comes out of a pipe, right, and then is opened up into a stream. So, you know, it, it's had some, it's, it's, you know, already an urban-type setting or whatever there.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, can I ask Marcus Thompson to come up for just a second? Is that okay? Marcus, do you mind coming up for just a moment? Can you tell us from, from your point of view, what we're doing as a city and in your department to help, I guess, protect the area and do the right thing? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Marcus Thompson, Engineering, 6695 Church Street. So we have had discussions with HRC and Mr. Norris on ways we can mitigate that, minimize that disturbance. What we're thinking about was kind of what Mayor Protim mentioned earlier with the permeable pavers. Maybe in that, that lower parking lot area where the disturbance will happen, maybe turn that into like a pervious, use pervious materials such as permeable pavers to kind of balance things out.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
No problem.
At this time, we do need to have that public hearing. So if we have anyone here who would like to speak on the stream buffer, please come down and give us your name and address for the record.
Amy McCoy, 9938 Ashton Old. Based on the studies that have been done, have we looked at how much water actual collects in that area to know that it's not going to run off right into someone else's parcel? Because it's a lot of concrete and obviously you're going to have new structures, so there's going to be a lot more water flow into those streams, but also what goes into our storm drains, things of that sort. Do we have the capacity to meet that current condition, especially with climate change, right? So are we prepared for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
William Norris, 6554 Church Street, Douglasville. William Norris, uh, sixty-five fifty-four uh, Church Street, Douglasville. Um, to the last speaker's point, one thing to keep in mind with this redevelopment is that we're gonna be uh, putting in uh, current code stormwater management system uh, that will actually retain more water on the site than what actually happens on the site today and as is, so. Uh, the, the modern system will include underground uh, detention, and basically we'll have what's called a weirder structure that will release water slowly in the event of like a hundred-year storm, so. Um, we would also add that we are going to be improving the existing condition in the existing stream buffer, so this, with this variance, we're, we're agreeing to do a stream restoration as um, we're building out the development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Were there any other uh, questions, comments on this item? If not, let's go ahead and close uh, the public hearing. Can I address some of these questions? Okay, um, can I get staff to go back in the slides to where the entrance exits are? I believe it was in the screen that had asked about those. Well, I need it to be up there, though. Thank you, coach, and that would be...
Yeah, you go back to the site plan.
So, while they're looking for that, um, I know that there were a couple of other questions that were brought up. One of those was um, fire, police, and schools, and just for um, clarification, we have pre-development meetings, and our police, our fire, and our school are all part of those pre-development meetings before we ever get to this point. And so that, that goes for this development, just as it goes for every other development. And I will tell you guys, our police chief is not shy about saying, you gotta give me more officers. You've gotta give me more equipment, he lets us know what he needs, and we do whatever we can to give him what he needs to serve this community. Um, I think schools was brought up on this one, which I think we just addressed that, but I will say that this particular development is not targeted towards families. I'm certain that at some point, there will be a child that lives there, I bet there's not gonna be many, because you've got one bedrooms, and you've got two bedrooms that are roommate floor plans. This is really gonna be your young professionals. Um, I think we, Christ, wait, some of these are... And he covered that question, I think that was most of them, so up here on the site plan, can we see now where those entrance and exits are?
Dana is gonna come up and present that to you, and, and to your point, Madam Chair, on the question regarding feedback that we get, um, the impact feedback, we're going to, not only for this item, but all of your um, development items include documentation on the feedback from those other agencies and on the attachments. So, anybody who was participating in the meeting, um, anyone in the audience, they'll be able to go into our agenda management system and see that information, so they'll get it before Monday.
Okay, beautiful, thank you so much for that.
And the entrance to the development is right off of uh, Club Drive. So, you see where the separation of the building is, that's, that's your entrance.
Dana, you want to mention, and as it relates to the current entrance as well?
But they don't have a screen.
Yeah, and, and you may want to point out where the town green is, and then where the entrance to the development, so they can, yeah.
One way in, one way out?
Yes.
So, for emergency services, at this point, there's only one way in, one way out?
Right.
For a gated community?
There's a, there's a second down there by the, see the gate there?
They're, they wanna come up and shut up, there's a, yeah, there's a entrance there.
What road does it tie to?
This is Church Street.
No, for, he's talking about for the exit gate?
Yeah, the exit gate, or the front entrance. I'll see you come through the parking lot. Through the parking lot?
Yes, the big deal parking lot here. The overhead cross over thing is somewhere in this.
Thank you guys, very much, yes, I really appreciate y'all's time and effort, I'm at, okay. Mayor Pro Tim, that is all that I have this evening for planning and development.
Councilwoman Miller, thank you very much, if, if we did allow applause, I would, I'd give you a hand right now, it's quite an effort. We'll move on now to the next item, which, by the way, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee is yours, Councilwoman Miller.
Mayor Pro Tim, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
All right, our next, our next uh, committee is Public Relations Committee, Councilman Samuel Davis.
No business.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item is Public Safety Committee, um, let's see, who is? Where is that? Chris Wa, Councilman Watts, you're the vice chair of that?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, we have no business on the public safety.
Next item is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, that is also yours, Councilman Watts.
We also have no business under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Councilman Watts, Technology Committee, Councilwoman Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, we have no business under the Technology Committee.
Okay, and our last committee is the Transportation Committee, and I will ask the ranking member, um, Elena Hudson, if you will take that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, we have one item under the Transportation Committee this evening. Hold a public hearing and consider a proposed ordinance to amend subsections four point zero four, point, four point zero five, four point zero six, four point zero seven, four point zero eight, four point one zero, four point one one, five point zero three, and one zero zero six H to provide clarification regarding traffic study requirements, and Ms. Alicia Mann is here to help us with that.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council, Alicia Mann, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Before you, you have today, um, just kind of as a refresher, on March thirteenth, we came to you with traffic study. We came with you, came to you with the traffic study ordinance update, um, which then you all approved to go to Planning Commission and come back to you for final approval. And um, just to kind of give a little background of what we've seen and what we've heard of what um, led to this traffic study update, is outdated traffic data information, also studies that only included just the development location and increased freight traffic. So, on March thirteenth, just as a refresher, uh, what we presented to you was a comprehensive definition of the requirements of which we were looking for, so we went into more, more robust detail of what should be included in the traffic study. Also, um, the timeframe, meaning that um, this traffic study would need to be completed within twelve months of their development plan submission. The study area size, um, based on the trip generation that it would determine the radius, mile radius in which they would have to um, include in their study area for the traffic study. Also, the zoning classification table, that is in Table ten dash oh two in this update, um, based on the zoning classification to tell them what triggers the traffic study. The mitigation measures was also included in, um, which it outlined, what are the mitigation measures based on what their traffic study warrants, and also ensuring that the level of service is C or better is, um, comes from their mitigation measures. And also exemptions, and at that time, the exemptions were um, for remote areas, and also um, renovations, public facilities, as well as um, if there isn't sidewalks and pedestrian traffic, it don't have to be counted. So, um, from that meeting, we went to, uh, from that meeting, we came, you all gave us the comments to include um, the language for the remote areas exceptions to, um, for it to be at the discretion of the city engineer, and from then, we decided to remove remote areas to lean more on the zoning classification table for them to warrant a traffic study. Also, it was um, included for us to include traffic for previous years, and that's been added to the existing traffic volumes, of which they will need to look at traffic for previous years, previous three years of available traffic. And also, we were given the feedback to um, speak to Douglas County for anything that they thought would be um, good for this traffic study update. So, from um, Douglas County, the feedback they gave us was to include square footage, and that's been included in the concept and site plan section. Also, um, for the development to include the existing right-of-way, and that's been added in the inventory transportation facility section to collect AM and PM peak data, and that's also been including those existing traffic volumes. They also said that um, to include the three-year crash data to become part of their crash analysis, that's also been included in the existing traffic volumes. To include turning movements, that's also been um, included in the existing traffic volumes. For any um, proposed roads or anything that had to have to do with mitigation measures, um, for their intersection site distance, they must use the um, speed, when they're using that calculation, they must use the speed of the primary access route. And also for the mitigation measures to ensure that all their access areas have an acceptable level of service C. And what's going to the Planning Commission, the following comments were what we received. Um, to define the remote areas, it doesn't, I mentioned before, we removed remote areas to lean more on the zoning classification table. To also provide baseline guidelines for collecting pedestrian traffic, we took the um, out of the exceptions that they do not have to collect pedestrian traffic where there is not a sidewalk, to ensure that our city engineer, as well as our community development director, will be able to have data-driven decisions when they're requiring more sidewalks or wider sidewalks. And the last comment we received was to make sure that they have um, knowledge of upcoming um, developments, and that was already in our update under trip generation, in which they will need to look at the trip, trip generation from approved and pending developments that will be coming in the area, in the study area. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mann, for all the information, you've been very thorough, so I appreciate that. Council, do you have any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, seeing as there is none, I will now open this public hearing, anybody would, that would like to come up and provide any comments regarding this item, now is your opportunity to do so. All right, seeing that there is none, I will now close this public hearing, and we will take this item up on Monday, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Hudson. Um, all right, that was the final committee, is there any other business that any council member would like to bring forward at this time or forever hold your peace? Now, is the time on sprockets, and we go to updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Joel Dodson. Thank you, Mr. Dodson, our staff attorney, Miranda Jordan.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I have no business this evening, thank you.
Chief of Police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, we have our music festival and barbecue cook-off. Saturday, so come get some good barbecue.
I was hoping you'd say it was now, we could head over there.
From twelve to five, uh, Saturday, at the police department, so come on down, get some good barbecue, and there's still some people singing, and we'll just have a great day, hopefully the sun is shining.
Awesome, fun will be had by one and all.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. City manager, Marcia Hampton.
No business.
I'm gonna jump over there and hug you for that. Any other, this is the time now that we provide for final comments from citizens and delegates. Uh, if anyone would like to come up and have their piece in front of city council, now is your opportunity. Same rule, same rules apply as before.
Now, Amy McCoy, nine-nine-three-eight Ashton Old Road. Um, thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, um, Mayor Pro Tim, city council, and with much respect to uh, Chief Sparks, um, but this definitely directly impacts public safety. Residents in my community, particularly those that live alongside Riverside Parkway and in the tributary, we have voiced concerns about unchecked and illegal presence of tractor-trailers parked along our roadways. However, multiple public safety agencies have acknowledged that they do not track the citations issued for certain violations. I deem this unacceptable. In an effort to understand and mitigate the magnitude of this issue, I took it upon myself to reach out to E nine-one-one services. What I uncovered was a staggering base of, based on ending the months, uh, based on the years at January of the prospective years and in concluding my data at January of twenty-twenty-five, this is what I was able to determine. From two thousand eighteen to twenty-twenty, E nine-one-one data shows that we had a hundred and twenty-nine traffic stops, only thirty-seven parking violations, and a hundred and ninety zone patrols. Since the construction of nearly one thousand apartment units and commercial buildings, those numbers have skyrocketed. One hundred and forty-six, um, I'm sorry, one thousand four hundred and sixty-five traffic stops, three hundred and eighty-seven parking violations, and over one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight zone patrols. All of this on a three-mile stretch of the road of Riverside Parkway only, that's from Thornton Road to Fairbourn Road. This increase has made our roads more dangerous, especially with semi-trucks, semi-trucks illegally parked in the bike lanes and near residential areas, despite the clear signage prohibiting them. Cyclists are forced, and I had several residents who are cyclists in our neighborhood that can attest to this, I just realized you guys are not allowing public comments for the next city council meeting, but I'll be in DC, so tonight was important for me to speak up. I'll let them know that, well, they'll probably still show up. But they're left to navigate unsafe shoulders. We've seen hazmat cleanups, dual trailers blocking entire lanes on this road, and they're single-direction lanes. We want to see economic prosperity in our community, but not at the expense of health, safety, and the dignity of the people who live there. We paid for a certain standard of quality in our homes, and we're not able to retain that value due to the increase of warehouses, due to the increase of apartments, and the constant construction debris up and down that road, that impacts our value. They're not, the prosperity must be shared and balanced, not reserved for companies who violate the law while residents foot the bill. Council members, I'm asking you to create a thirty-to-sixty-day plan that can help the chief implement some way of being able to hold these tractor-trailers accountable, or even these companies who violate this over and over and over again. Trucks are parked the wrong direction, wrong way. Um, it is hard for pedestrians who use our public transportation, who are there before the sun comes up, and then who have to walk along those roads as the sun goes down. Any silence or any inaction on this issue will speak volumes, and it's time for us to show up because our concerns matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy, I think what we'll have to do is have a conversation between legal counsel and the chief to, to look at options on... What, the chief, you want to say something?
A lot of the roadways in the county.
I've had a conversation with the commissioner, uh, because she was calling me, and I was calling her and telling her that you all took responsibility for that, because when we were, when we had it, we were, we were down there writing citations, we had signage, and I think they removed the signage. So, that's uh, that's in their area.
Yeah, and, and per your last SDS agreement, any improvements to that road would have to be done by Douglas County. Um, and that's, they have the responsibility for Riverside.
The whole road is managed by the county.
Is that, is that the case for any roads where we share the, with city and a county, it's got multiple municipalities, and so who owns the majority of the road is, is bears up responsibility, or how is that defined?
No, 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 this is something different, this was per the roads agreement, um, through SDS. Miranda, I know you were getting ready to speak to something, I'm just suggesting any improvement, such as the parking on and off the road, to expand the road, to do the shoulder, that's actually Douglas County's responsibility.
I noticed that the police...
It is, but excuse me, if you don't mind me jumping in, because, I mean, I, I contact our deputy chief all the time with pictures and say, go here, please send, and, and they do, but, but they're right. There are limits to what we as a city can do along Riverside Parkway, we do what we can, but I'll get with Whitney and, and... Parkway. We do what we can, but I'll get with Whitney and see what we can jointly work on.
And I appreciate that. And I've had conversations with our commissioner, and she has multiply times stated that it is a responsibility of the city. And then even, I know, everybody's gonna point a finger in which direction, right?
Our maps are better than their maps.
She's probably hearing that from their staff.
But what I will say is, when it comes time for me paying my tax bill, I pay to both.
Yeah.
And I pay a lot of money. And for a tenth of an acre, and the amount I have to pay in HOAs, I'm having to sell less than, less than homes that aren't at the same quality because of these extra deficiencies that we have to experience on our way there. In addition, because I know we are able to write speeding violations, moving violations, we should be able to have the authority to prevent parking violations, mechanisms in place of putting a boot on these trucks so that they do not continue to destroy our roadways. Again, we have cyclists who have to go into traffic, and keep in mind, human trafficking is a serious issue, a huge issue, and we definitely don't want our students having to walk those roads at night with these trucks out there. Okay, thank you.
Dr. John Rogers, sixty-three thirty Holburn Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three four. Mayor, Tim, council, thank y'all for y'all's patience. I know it's been a long evening. I'll be short, will not belabor you long. Environmental impact statement would be a good study for them. We talked about eight trees downtown, or 10 trees, 21.4 acres, 21.24 acres. We're looking at 10,000 trees, 10,000 hardwoods. I would like to, I lived in Miami, my, my background is engineering. When they built the reserve, a lot of our fruit trees died. We are, a lot of them didn't even produce the flowers that they were supposed to produce during the time of the construction, and it was on 92. We're talking about a half a mile, but we're talking about 100 yards that they're gonna, if it's allowed, the work that'll be done. Most of the trucks that'll be coming in that way will be coming in the emergency entrance. It won't come through the front, it'll come through the back. It'll come through what is ever most convenient for them to get, for what they gotta get to, to get it done. My home, it's four-bedroom, three-bath, two decks on the back, immaculate, right out a quarter of an acre. The most they've offered me for my home. Can you put those little apartments up there, or the townhomes? I got an offer of 285,000 for my home, and it's almost a quarter of an acre. It's beautiful property, it's kept clean. Like I said, it's four bedrooms, three full bathrooms, the basement's built out. Beautiful place. 285. How can you tell me they're gonna get, offer $300,000 for a town home, and you stacked on each other like they are in Miami? You can jump from rooftop to rooftop. That's just not logical. It makes no sense. So 10 trees is a big deal, but 10,000 is a lot more. And for them to say that those worth 300,000, it's not practical. It's not practical. Y'all have a blessed day. And remember, it's the people that put you in the position that you're in today. So take your people into consideration. We're here to support you. From 2000 to 20, to 20, 25, my taxes on my properties that I own have went from 13,000 to over 30,000. I pay them on a regular basis. I gotta save a certain amount of money every month, just to make sure my taxes are paid, because I don't own nothing. I just get to pay taxes on it. I get to be a steward over it. Y'all have a good evening. Have a blessed doctor.
Thank you, sir. And anyone else who'd like to come up?
Yes, I'm Alfred Jenkins, Alfred Jenkins, Jr. My son is Alfred Jenkins, III, so just for, for the record there. I live at seven two eight seven Essex Drive, Douglasville. And concerning the same issue that the doctor was just talking about, those apartment homes on Malone, it doesn't appear to us as a community that they've really done their due diligence to let us know what's going on and what really is expected to happen. However, we're gonna be the ones that's gonna have to live with it. And I understand the passion of some of my neighbors, and I apologize for any insensitivities, but we're gonna have to live with this. So this is the opportunity that we have to speak on it, so they're speaking, and from their heart. So we, we really don't feel that they've presented a case for us to accept. And I hope that you guys look at what was presented and what should be presented. A lot of holes, a lot of gaps, a lot of missing stuff, and I appreciate you can-do attitude, chief, and will, it's gonna task you, but it, it's gonna be a task, and what you're gonna do, what you can't have. We appreciate it. However, we do want an analysis, we do want a impact study to show us how that's gonna affect your response time, how that's gonna affect your deployments and your personnel, and the things that we are gonna have to live with. And the other studies, the utilities, different things, they, they really, we, we wanna understand that now, and we really don't wanna get into and accept their, just approve it and we'll work it out. That's unacceptable. That's what this forum is for, for all of us to understand what's going on, and to correct, to adjust whatever we need to do, and to accept it so that we all, it can be a win-win. We all can have something that we appreciate, that we're willing to live with. The changes that they're proposing would fundamentally change the nature of our, our community, because most people brought it, bought those properties because they saw the mature trees, the green space, the privacy. And now, in Hunter's Ridge, there are over 200 single-family homes. They wanna put 181 units in a small concentrated area in the, right in the middle of that. That, that will fundamentally change the nature of our environment. So please think about that and what we're gonna have to live with, and we don't want to lose that, our, our environment or our homes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Is there anyone else who would like to come up at this time? Yes, sir.
Refer to the, what happened, yeah, I guess you could say, the, the, I believe the property there, where y'all want to do this development, that's city property. Allen Cosby, 1992 Rose Avenue, and our founding members of the city, you know, set that land aside for the city, for city things to do, and I, you know, I don't agree with, you know, developing it, keep it as a city property just the way it is for the city's use. That's just the way I see it. And we're even, you know, you made a comment about the age limit. Well, I'm, you know, still 71-years, young professional, so I believe I can leave and move in there too, I believe. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, Alfred Jenkins, III, at seven two eight seven Essex Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. I really don't have much to say, much to add, but I just think on the topic of the houses, like the apartments and townhouses being put in, that just the green space, I really like, appreciate the green space that's there. And I understand, like, the person who owns that property can do with the property what he wants, and we can't control how they use the property. But I just think if it can go anywhere else, I think we, we could look into putting it somewhere else where we're not taking away from such vital green space near a neighborhood that really relies on it. If there's anywhere else where we could put that, those apartments, especially if they're needed, if we're trying to, like, house, like, certain people, or even grow Douglasville, I just think it could, see if it can go somewhere else that, like my dad said, could be more of a win-win. And because, like, the nature's something that we really depend on, even when we don't even think about it, and I think it really will change the environment and the vitality of both Hunter's Ridge and the surrounding area without the animals. But, yeah, I appreciate y'all's response and considerations on the topic and just the fair evaluation, so thank you.
Thank you, certainly, Mr. Jenkins. Appreciate it. Any other comments at this
Hello, this is Ray Jenkins again. Um, yes, it's the same topic that my dad and my younger brother were talking about. I did have a question about the, if, I wanted to know if they had, like, some sort of plan for, like, the plans or what they're gonna do with the trees, or since they're cutting down, like, a whole branch of, like, forest area, did they have some sort of plan for, like, planting new trees elsewhere, or like, if they had some thing they had put together for all of that?
I think that, I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that covers any requirements along those lines.
Okay. I was just curious, because part of the thing that kind of threw me off with the whole project was that some of the things felt kind of unfinished, or like they hadn't considered enough. Like, for example, we weren't really contacted about it very much, and most of the reason that we even knew about it was because we happened to see a sign while driving, and my dad noticed, so he started doing stuff about it. And even, like, my mom and dad, like, created planlets to hand out around the neighborhood to let everyone know that there was something going on here. So, and just, I guess part of it is just me being younger, but also, I'm more used to people, like, if something's being said, then it's going to be somewhere on the internet, or like, some sort of, like, announcement that's clear. So it's not reliant on specifically drivers who happen to look over their shoulder and see, like, a sign somewhere. So, and the, the lack of communication. So some of it felt a little bit deceptive in how they planned their project, which was kind of concerning to me. Personally, I don't have an issue with people having things they want to build near us, but it also needs to be done in a way that considers everyone and the whole situation, and finds the best place to locate it that's not just because it's convenient for them, but somewhere that can be helpful for us so that they're not hurting someone by trying to position something in a position or situation that just makes it really difficult for everyone living in that area. But yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I, if you don't mind?
Yes, go ahead.
So if I could just answer a couple of your questions right quick, because I really appreciate your family, like, speaking, I think that's great. But the developer does not have to have community engagement meetings. They don't have to. That's where the signs come into play, and you guys noticing them. This is a public forum and a public hearing, and that's exactly what it is, to, to make sure that you guys get the information. Every bit of the agenda items and the attachments, they're on the city website, and, and you can look up all of the plans. And then, when it comes to, like, trees and buffers and all that, that is in our, our code, and that is what part of this meeting could have been, to say, "Hey, you can do that, but can we get more buffers?" Or, "If we were to do this, can we, can we add this kind of amenity?" But honestly, nobody said that tonight. All they said is, "No, we don't want it." So nobody asked about, you know, like, again, like, tree buffers and amenities, or, or, you know, like, maybe if the number of homes could be reduced, I don't know. That, those are great questions. But again, like, tonight, I feel like maybe it could have been a missed opportunity then, because we didn't get a chance to ask those sorts of questions.
I see. Is it that a lot of people are just against it, but rather than trying to make edits or changes to the project?
Absolutely.
I see.
But I appreciate you, so please come back again, and we'll, we'll discuss it, and we'll figure out how to maybe make another project work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up? Well, I, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who did show up and all those who, who came out to speak. It's, it's really something that we, we need to hear from you, because, you know, if, if you're not here, we operate in a vacuum. And those, sometimes it'll be the worst decisions you can make are in a vacuum. Regardless of what your position was, your feelings on it, and I know there was a lot of passion in this room tonight, and that's, you know, we need to hear it. We wanna hear it, and, and we appreciate you coming. And especially a shout-out to the younger folks who came up and spoke, because that's so important, you know, to get started at an early age, engaged in your, in your, in your civic duties. It's, it's just wonderful to see you guys come up here, and I really appreciate it. And you, very, 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 very well, well said, too. I think you made your points. So, that being said, if there's no other business before the city council, we are adjourned for the evening.